You're on mute, I can't hear you.
Room is on mute.
Thank you.
Jesse Mason? Jesse Anderson?
Present.
Jesse Bluthard?
Here.
Jesse Berman?
Here.
Jesse Domeniac?
Here.
King.
Present. One meeting is standing remotely this evening. All right, two items on the mayor's report. First item is a follow-up from the last meeting in the Veterans Memorial Committee. I see a couple of members are here. You can come up here. We have our meeting with the committee and several people there. All people in the room.
There's an open mic.
Here, one of those needs to get moved.
Okay. I think we're good. Can you hear us, Mary?
Mary, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, good. All right.
See?
All right, Veterans Committee. So we met last week. I thought it was a very good meeting. We had discussed maybe six different potential spots, quickly eliminated about three of them, came down to two. And I think, hopefully, I'm speaking for the whole group, that we have all come to the conclusion or agreed that the property that is just kind of on the west, west and north end of the Billburst Wetlands is an appropriate position for this memorial, gives us enough space to build the memorial. I'll let the Veterans Committee fill in any details, but the way we left the meeting was hopefully coming to the board and get the general consent to move forward. We had some contractor groups in the room that were there from foundations that looked to donate some of their time. I believe the Veterans Committee has already set up their 501(c)(3), so it should be all, all, all on board, and we're going to meet again two weeks, well, 13 days from now, the Tuesday before the next meeting for an update. So I just wanted to let the Veterans Committee address the board, if there are any questions for the board, and keep moving this along.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. As the mayor mentioned, we met yesterday. He, the mayor, created a working group for us, a Veterans Memorial Working Group. We met yesterday. We discussed several things. Most importantly, we discussed the location, and we all came to the agreement that the best location would be on the property is commonly known as the wetlands. I have included maps, yes, for all of you. So that's what we agreed upon. So tonight, we are here to ask for the, to move forward on the soil borings that were approved in September 2016, and for the board's approval to build the memorial on the location indicated on the maps that I provided.
Sure. And so we don't have this as a set agenda item for an official vote, but I just want the trustees to have any comments or concerns or were against this proposed site to be able to, you know, before we go full steam ahead.
So we're not voting tonight?
We're not voting specifically tonight, so I, the, but the process is, you know, moving forward. I don't think, until we get to, I guess, we gave your design to Lakota and come up with a plan, that's probably when we'll vote and we get to actual rendering.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we're just looking at stands. Any input from anybody? We appreciate the quickness of putting, I don't know, 40 people around the table.
Mr. Jozwiak, I can't hear you. Could you speak into the mic?
I would just thank you for putting so many people together around this table and wanted to find out if there's any questions from any trustees or anybody regarding this location. I think everybody around that table agreed that it would be the best place for it. Lakota actually drew quite a nice little picture, and again, it was, we did not want to slow down or make any changes, cause any issues with the park.
Thank you. Anyone from the board? All right, we're, we're in good, we're in good shape, and thank you for compromising and working through this, getting this moving forward. Trustee Pierce?
If, as we've been told before, the cost of the soil boarding is around $6,000, isn't that below the spending limit of the administrator? And then he could proceed ahead? And does he need, does he need formal directions?
I don't believe he necessarily needs formal direction on that, but we also will be talking to the contractors that were in the room. They basically said, Pete, I'm not going to hold it to them. They said they basically donate their labor and time on projects in a foundation, so it may be a zero cost, or we'll see where that leaves us. But I think Jim, what do you have up to 10? So do you have three up to 10?
One.
Okay.
It's wonderful.
All right.
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Any objection with Jim using his spending authority to get this stuff? All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting done, Jake.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
It's great to see this move forward so quickly. Thank you, Your Honor, for making this happen.
It is also, I don't have anything written to read, but we also have, today is International Women's Day, so I want to acknowledge that I see, we have several women on this board, lots of staff, a lot of people that keep this running. So I want to thank you for all of your efforts and acknowledge today is International Women's Day. Citizens wishing to address the board. Blank sheet is, blank sheet, okay. All right, so anyone else, anyone want to address the board? Is anyone here for a specific item?
For 5G.
Okay. Please sign in. You can, if you prefer, if you would want to speak now, that's fine. If you want to wait until the committee, the whole, but I still, we just have you fill in for the, for the record, for the minutes that your, you know, name and your topic. So there should be a sheet up here on the.
Yeah, I'm writing more here to listen.
Sign in just in case, in case you decide you want to speak. Thank you. So we're onto the consent agenda, only one item. Anyone, any motion to move the one item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I entertain a motion in a second to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion, trustee Peterson, second trustee Mason, roll call, please.
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Onto the regular business. First item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of $530,524.38 to have a motion in seconds. Motion, trustee Bluthard, second trustee Mason, discussion on the, was it trustee Pierce? Second trustee Pierce, sorry about that. Any discussion regarding the? All right, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
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 Six voting yes motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of an ordinance formally adopting the zoning map effective March 1st, 2023 for the village of Aniak, ordinance number 23-3-5. I entertain a motion and a second, waiving the second reading.
So moved. So, sorry, so moved.
Second, trustee Pierce. Any discussion? I will say there has been no changes, annexations, or anything from last year's zoning map, from what I can tell, so. Right, Michael? Yeah, firms? Yeah, okay, no changes.
No changes.
All right, roll call, please. Yes.
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 Six voting yes motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution accepting rain for rent proposal to provide delivery installation. We will pick up of all quoted materials and equipment for bypass pumping related to the clarifier slab replacements, the wastewater treatment plant, East Clarifier in the amount of $77,745.49. So moved. Resolution 2308, I have a motion, trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, I don't know if.
The voice is really different.
I think my ears are plugged up. Hey, you guys are kind of like. Change up. All right, we have the trustee Pierce's side. Do we have anything from Jim or Danny that you guys want to mention on this item?
Your Honor, good evening, Lord. Yeah, I'll just briefly explain what this will be utilized for or not. It's kind of a backup emergency pumping, being that we're going to take this tank out of service. That will basically leave us with an 800,000 gallon deficiency. So we talked to Rainforen and two other companies. Rainforen was the lowest with the best option of a single pump and a backup. This will allow us to set the pump up and piping, and from the Headworks building, which is the main inflow in, in a high rain event where we have infiltration, it drives off the gallons that basically come into the plant. We will pump, start those pumps up and pump into a detention basin that we have on site that used to be utilized in the wastewater treatment. So it's kind of a backup, but I don't think we want the treatment plant to overflow. Well.
Hey, can you, I know there's some mention, can you address, or is there maybe an update from your gym about anything you've heard regarding the insurance on either the clarifier or this?
Yeah, so Jim and I had a discussion with the insurance company and their third-party group that's kind of an investigation company. It was very positive. We actually, Rachel just submitted all the bills that we have paid for or incurred up until this point, and any proposals that we have, like JJ Anderson's Rainforen. One of the topics was his Rainforen, how it would be for him to burn it. They didn't see why it wouldn't be, but we haven't got a final approval on it. But I'd seem pretty positive. I think they, the 370,000, they have possibly coming back to the village through the.
Thank you. Any questions, anything about this item? All right, not, roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
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 Six voting yes motion carries. Item number five is consideration and approval of a resolution approving a $20,000 commitment to the Aniak Township for an outdoor fitness court at Tim Osmond's sport complex as part of the 2023 National Fitness Campaign, resolution number 23-09. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved for this thing.
Motion, trustee Pierce? Second, trustee Luther. Discussion, trustee Pierce.
I'm really struggling with this because I don't know what the usage, amount of usage is. It's a good $10,000, it's one of the $20,000. We have a total of $100,000 by the time it's done, spread among donors in the township and the village. I mean, I never thought, I never thought frisbee golf would go anywhere. I drive by there a lot of times, and there's people out there with their frisbees, torn frisbees at these silly hoops in the ground. It's, it's loads. I, I just don't know, so I'm kind of curious to hear what the rest of the board thinks.
Trustee Mason?
Libertyville Complex, you know, that's, that's out of business. Second, we're throwing money when we don't have a plan for maintenance of the parks. We don't have security, you know, they've got security in their parks. We don't have cameras in our parks. I think we should get our parks up to par, take care of Centennial Parks and cameras so kids aren't snatched. Take care of Peterson Park for the, for the residents that use, Aaron Harbor uses that parks over there with security. So if someone goes down there, then someone's not injured by some crazy person nicking around there. We, we, our parks are not secured, and we're going to throw 20 grand that easily could be used to secure our parks. We have not stepped up, and we, you know, in the, in the past, and it's on the agenda for later today about the crime. We're going to throw 20 grand and forget about securing our kids' safety. So I would be, I'd be a no until, until we can execute. Just then, what's happened with Libertyville, that money waste. So private venture, yeah, private venture wants to do it fine, they can make money, but not throwing money where to secure our parks first.
All right, thank you, trustee Peterson.
Well, I'm all for securing our parks, of course. I believe that we are in partnership with this park, correct? Wasn't there an Oslo grant?
We own a third, the township owns a third, school district.
Okay, is the school district donating any money toward this?
Just to clarify, the Tim Osmond Park is adjacent to school property, but they're not part of the cooperative agreement between the township and the village. And in that agreement, goes back almost 20 years, and it, it basically says that we're going to split costs of operation or upgrades, or whatever costs are associated with it through a committee. This never, that, that committee hasn't met a long, long time. So this is really, consider this a request directly from the township to us to participate in this, this particular.
Thank you. I struggle with this too. Our parks need so much. They, they even need some extra staff just designated for our parks to empty garbages and mow. And, you know, I, I know Public Works does a very good job, but years ago, we did have two designated people for our parks, and, you know, over the years, that got cut. And I understand why, the budget constraints, but I struggle with this as well when we have downed trees and, you know, there's a lot of chatter out there about how we don't take care of our parks and why are we building a new one? And I, I just have a real hard time with approving this. We just found out about it, what, two weeks ago? And, you know, it's a lot of money, and I don't think this was in the budget at all. Okay, I have a hard time saying yes to this too.
I'm going to make a suggestion, this too, as I've been thinking about this. So the store, I know that we were given a date of 15th by the township, otherwise they lose the crap money. I don't know if that date's flexible. We did receive a favorable recommendation from Parks Board for this project, but did not give a dollar amount or go any further. I would be a proponent of us coming up with some parameters of something not to exceed a number and send it to the park board with their actual recommendation on a dollar amount of a funding source, just so, you know, I don't want to take money out of the parks' plans if they want to use, buy new swing sets for Centennial Park versus this. But I think, you know, that board should maybe have one more look at this, to get something more concrete. That's just maybe a little unconventional, but just something that I was kicking around.
Let me say, let me make sure I don't call you before another board meeting, where you can steal my.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
No, that's exactly what I was going to say, is because I think the park board recommended this, and it's, I think it should go back to the park board to tell us the dollar amount and whether to take that from their budget this year or next, because this is, this is a park-related expense, so I'd like to see them have more of a say in whether we spend it here or put it in one of our own parks. I mean, I'm not trying to throw it out to them, but I think their, their recommendation is something that I would like to honor, but I think we need to see where they can fit it in their budget, where they might go with it.
I will give them copyright rights on that. Katrina?
I, I will say, I'm confirmed on this as of now. I just, as other trustees have stated, there's a lot of our parks need to work in maintenance, and we need to, we need to take care of those first before we start doing something new. We can't justify doing this. Take care of that, so.
Trustee Domeniac?
I would concur with the comments. I think we need to spend money on our existing parks. I do like the idea of sending it back to the Parks Commission because certainly in previous discussions, we talked about how we did not engage the Parks Commission. So again, as trustee Bluthard said, I want to honor their recommendation, but to ask them if this is how they want to spend that money.
All right, and then Director Quilty, I want to give her a chance to listen on the parks.
In fact, it shows Jim Moore's recommendation, and it does say just a favorable donation. Township Supervisor Shaughnessy came and asked for $20,000, and I think he was just hoping that we, the township was going to put 20, the village put 20, but he is looking for other organizations and/or corporations to help fund his $100,000. So it's basically, and it, it was requested to come up to the general fund. But you as a board decide on what is, would be the max you would want to give.
Do we know if Tom Shaughnessy has secured any other donations?
No.
Okay, we do not know that.
Good question. And I think he told us that when he presented that, he was waiting to see what the village's position was and the township's position was before he went and started knocking on doors. And I believe.
So see, Pierce, could you speak into the microphone, please?
I am so sorry. I believe, I believe trustee Shaughnessy, I mean, supervisor Shaughnessy came when he was at the board last time, said that he was looking for the village township to kick in first before he started knocking on doors.
Sure. And I, and I think, I believe it's on there, the township's agenda tonight, for they're discussing the 20,000. Us, the 50 was the amount of the grant, so that would leave 65,000 that they would have to raise to make this project even work, so.
Well, and.
Yes, yeah, trustee Domeniac, go ahead.
Perhaps as we go through this process, and I, I think it kind of reflects it in that resolution, but we could potentially say that our, if we make the decision to move forward and give this money, that it's predicated on him being able to raise the rest of the funds, because if he does, I know it says in there that it depended upon getting the grant, but if he can't raise the rest of the funds, then obviously, we're not going to pay out that money, right? My stance at the last meeting was go out and see if there's an interest in the community for this through fundraising, and then potentially, we look at partnering to fill any potential gap, so that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a Parks Board meeting the 15th next week. We have a motion in a second for discussion. I'll withdraw my, I'll have Katrina want to say.
Was it April or March 15th that the, that they need to have it secured, right?
Was, was the date, it was March 15th, he said March 15th, but their meeting is the 15th also, so. All right, so trustee Pierce is withdrawing his motion. Yep, I'm withdrawing my motion. Motion. Yeah, there was a motion in a second.
Trustee. So trustee Pierce, was your, I think you said it was for discussion purposes.
It was for discussion purposes.
Right, you opened it up for discussion purposes, having one discussed it. I don't know if you need to withdraw.
Why just continue?
Would you, were you, did you motion to approve? Was there a motion to approve? But no, I thought it was motion open for discussion, that was it. Yeah, you couldn't make a motion to refer, there's no question about that, that you make a motion to refer for positive, for positive recommendations. And honestly, be what my prefer recommendator thought would be on this, but you don't have to, everybody knows. But if you want to, you can make a motion to refer to this to the Parks Board for further inquiry and response to the village board.
I like that. That's pretty difficult, a lot of words.
All right, well, before we do that, though, if we, if we do that, and they recommend that we do the 20,000, are we behind it? There's no sense sending it back if we're not willing to honor the recommendation.
I think that, you know, it's obviously an advisory board. I think that it just hasn't been thought through the funding source and the actual amount. We just kind of got a, we support this, but no dollar amount. So I guess we'd be looking for more clarity on amounts of funding source. At some point, we're writing on their grade either tonight, or after they make another decision and tell us how much money they want to spend if we decide no. Mary, I see your hand up over there.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, I thought we were sending it back to them for them to make a decision as to whether they want to fund this, and if they are going to fund it, then what are they going to not fund as a result of this $20,000, so that we stay within the proposed budget? Am I missing something?
Yes, no motion was made, it got to that effect.
No, I, I know there's no motion. I'm trying to understand what we're sending back to them for. Are we saying to just tell us again that they want it? Or are we sending it back to them to say, if you want this, what's your recommendation for how this fits within our financial constraints? Are you willing to give up? I think trustee Boothheart said that, you know, what are you willing to give up so that we can spend this $20,000 on it?
Trustee Peter?
Out of respect for the Park Commission, I think we should ask them and let them decide where, where the money's going to come from and what they're going to deduct from their budget. But they're the Park Commission, they're there for a reason, we should listen to them. So either way, they can decide, the money's in their budget, whether we spend it on this or something else. But out of respect for that commission, I think we should ask.
I, I agree, and I guess they would have to be able to articulate what they're giving up, and I guess staff would have to articulate, this is what's in the budget, which of these are you willing to give up? And I don't, I haven't seen the parks budget, but if there's something in there about repair of Centennial Park or whatever, you know, do they want to give that up so that they can have this? It's kind of what I'm looking for from a direction or a recommendation.
Well, to, to end this, I will make a motion to refer this back to the Parks Board with clear direction to provide us what they would like to spend and where they would like to get this from as far as their spending source and what they, how it fits in their budgets.
All right, motion trustee Pierce, second. Second trustee Mason. Can I make a clarifying point? All right, you seconded. You're the second. Right. Trustee. We need to clarify the motion. It might be helpful, who to go forward with that, would that be acceptable, sir? I don't care. Thank you. I just wanted a reason.
Just to clarify, there is a park improvement fund, which has about $80,000 in it. But almost all of the entire park operation is funded on general fund. So just to clarify, there, if we choose to do this, I don't see an offset of $20,000 in the general fund, parks budget right off the top of my head that I could see to cut. So I, I, I think the commentary of this or that doesn't necessarily apply, but you could, as an option, you know, ask the Parks Board, are you willing to spend some of the park improvement fund of that 80,000? I mean, maybe that would, you know, if they, if they made it, they have kind of more control over that. We don't touch that money. The village board has never dipped into the park improvement fund. That might be more appropriate that they. Um, that might be more appropriate that they decide. And that's why they specifically asked for it out of the general fund, because they didn't want to spend the eighty thousand that they they control. So I don't know, that helps you, I just want to make that.
You got to also understand, we got a piece of property, it's got to be somewhat designed for the kids to walk the Peterson Park. They got to get some bulldozers over there, knock some trees down or make a trail, so that just doesn't sit there for five, ten years, just sitting there.
Right, but I think that project is potentially grant funded or funded from the state and or general fund, I don't think.
I know, but if we do stuff, we just don't want it to sit, because the, you know, I don't want stuff to get delayed and something happens to to a kid that walked on fifty-nine and we started earlier, that kid still could be alive. I just want, when stuff is done, we do it. And and we do put other projects in front of, we bought this property, when all of a sudden we start another project, we didn't finish this project. Well, let's get one thing done, Peterson Park has been a nightmare for darkness. I've asked for gates to be put there because people go down there that shouldn't be down there after dusk to secure that park, because someone's going to get, someone's going to get hurt down there. And and it's just a matter of time, you know, somehow subdivision concerned, put cameras in their subdivision, but we can't figure out a wifi uh, security cameras in that subdivision or that park, Peterson Park.
All right, thank you.
I'm waving my hand.
All right.
Um, I, can I just comment, Jim, I I see this as a park improvement, so you know, I I don't think it comes out of general fund, personally, if it's a park improvement, because we're adding a a a new, um, opportunity in there, then then it should come out of parks improvement and then the question is, do you want to take twenty thousand on that? I mean, Centennial Park, we get complaints about that, we've got issues with the with the skate park, so. Um, I I don't want to beat this to death, I think we've said enough and I have said enough, but that's just my final thoughts. Thank you.
And, um, the point was ask, I'll be sure we put the new park on the next parks agenda, so they know that they have had to look at. You're the best. Um, all right, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries for the referral back to the park. Um, next item on the agenda is item six, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving a temporary purchasing policy for the village maniac, resolution twenty-three dash ten, that's our motion and a second. For discussion. I'll make a motion for discussion. Motion trustee Boothheart for discussion. Second, I'm going to give it to the left side, the second trustee Berman, um, administrator Kime, I know there's been.
So, I'll just give you a little background, your honor on the board. This topic came up based on our inability to obtain vehicles. Um, we were not able to order squad cars based on shortages or supply issues. Um, if if memory serves me correct, there was a four-day window sometime last April uh, where whoever had gotten the state bid was able to accept orders. We didn't know when that four days happened, we probably learned about it afterwards, but the discussion started um, among staff a- about, you know, what do we do about maintaining the fleet when we're having difficulty ordering? And long lead times, if I order a dump truck, it's probably not delivered until twenty-five at this point. So the idea is to somehow enable staff to keep up with vehicle replacement. Um, and giving me specifically under under specific guidelines, the ability to order something outside of an approved budget. Now, I do see some wording in this that talks about, it's in on exhibit A in the last paragraph, it talks about already approved in the village budget, and that really doesn't give me any more authority than I have today, you know, today when you approve a budget that had three squad cars in it, we feel that we're authorized to go order those three vehicles. Um, this is really, we're we're trying to make an attempt to be able to order vehicles before a budget is approved. And and you could tie it possibly to a vehicle replacement plan. Um, you could limit it to only vehicles, but I don't know if we're going to run into supply chain issues in other areas. Um, so it's, I had a conversation with trustee Boothheart this afternoon. He had some concerns with this, but any anyway, that's where this comes from is our ability to maintain the fleet and order vehicles without the constraint of the budget cycles. And the the problem that we may run into, if the same thing happened again this year, we don't approve a budget until that becomes effective in May, and somehow in April, you know, we're, we would be allowed to place an order, we wouldn't necessarily be authorized. And I think we got to start thinking possibly about multi-year, if we're not getting things for so long, you know, should be, we'd be thinking about, even though we do a yearly budget, but something might take more than a year to get, should we be thinking about buying, you know, thinking ahead a couple of years when we're making purchases? But with a one-year budget cycle, that's that's becomes difficult, at least I feel uncomfortable ordering things that may be a future board and a future budget, you know what I'm saying? So this is what, I don't know if we're often doing a good job articulating, but that that's, that's what the idea and the background is behind this.
And Jim, from my, my understanding, you're paying for these vehicles when they're delivered. Place the order.
We might have put something down to get them built. Oh, they're, especially the dump trucks, I don't know that they're going to get those without putting something down, but I would try to not to pay as much as possible until.
How many, how many vehicles were ordered in the budget for twenty twenty-two? That we didn't.
Was it three? I think it was three, it's, 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 it's three, and obviously the problem becomes more compounded the further back we go, with pandemic related delays, we weren't able to secure the number of cars that we wanted in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. Not not to let go of action by the village, but the manufacturer's cap, we can get, you know, we wanted to order three, only two were available. We see ourselves falling further and further behind in our plan. Um, so that comes, the three that we were budgeted for this current year, providing the two or three that were behind previous years, it's starting to compound on us.
I'm, I'm not sure, though, if, why if we've got three budgeted right now, if the order window opens, we kind of order those three, and by that time, we're going to have the next budget open and approved, unless we dilly-dally around, which is happening to pass on budgets. I don't know why we don't just say, okay, the three are are budgeted, order them, there's another window opens up with it, before the other budget is approved, why the board just isn't notified, we need to have either a special meeting or or, um, do whatever's possible to to get approval or to to submit that. And to have some sort of plan before us on what you're going to order when the opening's open and occurred. I don't feel real, I I'll be honest, I don't feel comfortable giving an unlimited dollar amount, limited non-budgeted impact, it says right in here, no, no ability to forecast the impact of the budget. I don't, I don't really feel comfortable doing that, but I feel that there is other avenues, and you already got approval for three this year. And whatever trucks you haven't ordered this year, the window opens, you order them, and the budget starts, you order them again.
Understand the thought process, trustee, but part of the problem is, is the manufacturer, historically, they would open up their bid windows, and we'd be able to order throughout the period of, you know, say, ten months. This last time, they opened up the bid period or they accepted orders for a period of four days. So when we build or order cars from years past or the current budget cycle, the ability to purchase in the next budget cycle may not be there, so it's just a, we're trying to figure out a way to not necessarily catch up, but be a little bit closer to what we should be with the fleet.
See Mason?
I don't have a problem, I think this is probably necessary, because you're going to get on where it's an out, it's an out, and and, you know, with the conflict's going on, you know, with, uh, in the world, um, supply chains are shrinking, um, you 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 have to, there are three vehicles, um, and they're police vehicles, you you can't, you can't wait, you got to get, you got to get them done, it could be, we order them, and it could be two years till we get them. Um, you've got, I've, I've got cars in the shop that are on a Range Rover, stop, uh, going in eight months to get parts, so it's, it's not uncommon that these things are delayed, so if you want to get on board and by putting this in place, I get, I I I respect what trustee Pierce is saying, on the other hand, inflation hits, and if we get on board quicker, we're going to save money, so. You know, if, if it's in the budget, order to gash darn things when you can, when the state bid is, um, if it exceeds the budget, then then gash darn it, you know, someone's in a lot of trouble, it could cost you know, someone's job, so I don't see it, I don't see a big deal with it, because you're going to have staff meetings, you're going to have everything else. But the most important thing is to make sure we get the safety equipment for the jobs.
Trustee Pearson?
I know there's problems with supply chain, my vehicle, my brand-new twenty-twenty-three vehicle is in the shop with a faulty part, and it can't be driven, and not only is it backordered, the new part, they haven't started manufacturing yet. So I have a temporary vehicle for, I have absolutely no how, no idea how long. So I understand the problem. I'm all for, if if there's a four-day window that you can order vehicles, I I would absolutely agree to do that, but maybe not to exceed budget. You know, um, if we've, if we've budgeted for four police vehicles and the window opens, order them. And, um, come to us at the next board meeting and ratify it, but not to exceed budget, I'd be okay with that.
Trustee Boothheart?
Yeah, um, as administrator Kime, as you had a discussion on this earlier today, and I brought up some issues I had with it, and the first one that we talked about, and and it's, it's not in the actual language of the resolution, but it was in the description where it talked about, um, I'm trying to find it, where it said both budgeted and non-budgeted items. And then to purchase vehicles related equipment, equipment in a timely manner. I didn't have a problem with the budgeted side, it was the non-budgeted side that I had a a big issue with, but that isn't in the language in the resolution, so I think that kind of took care of itself. As, as Jim mentioned, it doesn't give him that extra leeway he needs to take advantage of a opening window or something else. Um, and once again, this is, when I talked to administrator Kime, it had nothing to do with him, but I was just looking at it from a generic standpoint and saying, if this was in place, that person would have the authority to really buy whatever they wanted to, and he would have nothing to say about it as an elected body. And that's my concern, is because there's no way of cancelling these, he has authority granted in this resolution to buy whatever he wants, vehicle related for the village under this emergency request. And I just, I have a problem with that, there's no elected official that has a skin in the game on this if something was to go wrong, so I just think it's, it's something that we need to work on some verbiage on. In relation to the police and any vehicles we need, I think we need to take a better look at that and take a look at what we're planning on budgeting next year in addition to what we didn't get this year, and maybe authorize that immediately so that you can, if it opens up, that you can buy the vehicles that you're supposed to get last year and budgeted for, and any that you're going to be requesting in the new budget. So maybe there's something we can do to change, put verbiage in, so that gives you that for public works for the police, so that it gives you that authority you're looking for, but without this really blank check that this does. So I don't have a problem authorizing for both years' budget or moving some stuff up or increasing this year's budget, whatever you need to do until the new budget's in place. But I I don't like this idea of giving this, and then there's no expiry on it. So I didn't know how long this temporary emergency resolution would be in effect. Um, is it something we'd have to go back in and cancel, or does it have a expiry on it?
That's a good point.
So, I mean, I think that there's probably a very good reason to do this, and I think with some correct rule exchanges and things like that, we might be able to, I might be able to support it. Um, I definitely want to make sure we can get the equipment for the police and public works that we need, but I just think we need to figure out a way of doing that and working it out properly in here.
So, what would your thoughts be? So the PD, for example, I know with the other parks too, very similar, we we complete a five and an eight-year vehicle replacement plan. Granted, it's a guideline, right, it's not in stone. But would the board be comfortable with authorizing village administrator to purchase in line with that vehicle replacement plan if we brought that to the board?
I, I would be. I mean, we need to give you the vehicles you need, so it's not a matter of that, it's, it's, but we just want to, I just want some checks and balances on ordering what the village.
Trustee Berman?
Obviously, this is something that is necessary, and I think that, um, I guess this is my own opinion, I think that things are bound to get worse, and I think that those timeframes are probably going to get even tighter, and I think that it's going to end up putting us into a bad bind and, um, when we get to that point, if if we get that to that point, then what do we do? Our officers need this, and so, um, they can't do their jobs without it, uh, you know, I I understand, as trustee Boothheart has stated, that, you know, um, maybe, maybe we, maybe going back through some of the language, but I I I just, I think we're going to kind of shoot ourselves in the foot if we don't. We need, we need to do it.
Trustee Domeniac?
Um, I think I I I'm aligning my thoughts with what trustee Boothheart said, you know, obviously, we need to make sure that our staff has what they need to be effective in their roles, but um, the fact that there's no expiry on here, I think, was one of the first things that leapt out at me. Um, you know, I think if we have a plan, a replacement plan, we need to look at that, we should adhere to that, so if we're behind on that, then that needs to be taken a look at, so, um, I agree with for budgeted items, non-budgeted items, it's just, I'm not comfortable with that, and and Jim, again, it has nothing to do with you as administrator, it's just the concept of of giving authority to you to spend money that's not budgeted and beyond your usual, um, ability in terms of the dollar amount, and I I guess, you know, I understand the four-day window, but and I can't remember who said it, but um, certainly if there's an opportunity that comes up in that short of a period of time again to call an emergency board meeting or, you know, I don't know attorney viscerally what opportunity we have to do something like a email vote or consensus by email or whatever, um, I I, yeah, I think we just need to look at the wording on this again, but again, I I think we need to fill the pipeline and and replace these cars. Um, it's just the method I'm not a hundred percent with.
I'll go over, I have a couple of suggestions or questions, so. Um, I heard some trustees talk about a timeframe, so, um, hopefully the supply chain catches up at some point, so maybe you know, suggest a two-year timeframe on this, because at that point, there could be a new board, a new mayor, a new administrator, I would probably feel more comfortable if we even named our current administrator in the resolution so that, you know, ten years from now, so-and-so's here, and doesn't use this for like a open checkbook, I don't know, we're legally that we specifically name somebody like owns a power of attorney in that regard?
We can absolutely put Mr. Kime's name in there. It's the person's.
You know, and then also maybe, you know, put the vehicle. Yeah, and then also maybe, you know, put the vehicle replacement plan as an attachment to this and um. You know, maybe not to exceed amounts, like, you know, that might be a couple of things that we tweak on it. Other than that. Yeah, um trustee Pierce, I'll go around.
I'm glad the other trustees are speaking, so I can kind of pick their minds while they're speaking um. If there was a form of expiry here, say, two years, as you mentioned, if the administrator was identified as suspended. And if the vehicle plan was attached to it and was not, not to exceed the plan from. Beyond to read that two year time period, not, you know, if they have a plan for two years, it's expiries in two years. Then they should only be able to purchase the vehicles that are within that two year frame unless we extend it past that two year frame.
Anybody else, anybody else think we maybe table it, propose revisions to come back next time, Mr. Jesse?
One more down. I'm more willing to take a look at the budget and amend last year's or this year's, whatever we need to do. To up it to that amount of cars that we're behind and need, because my my biggest concern is. We get a year from now and we don't budget for these cars, and we're gonna have to budget for whatever you're thinking you might buy if the opportunity exists. Because where are we gonna get that money if all of a sudden? You know, we can get eight police cars and we don't have that money sitting there, now we're in a situation where. The board has to cut other things or do stuff to get the cars because. You know, does that make sense? So I really would like to see it where I want him, however many cars we're behind and need. Needs to be adjusted, dealt with now in regards to our current budget and next year's budget and account for that so that they have everything they need. And that will give you the clearance you need under this current wording, but with the changes everyone's talking about.
Uh I think these are all very thoughtful comments, I think we need to kind of regroup on this and and look at ways to. Word this differently, and I think, given us that feedback. It it just becomes a timing issue, because. We may be ordering something, let's say now, for the twenty-three budget, that doesn't show up until. The twenty-four budget or maybe the twenty-five budget, it it, I gotta figure out a way to time this. And 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 make this wording kind of fit the timing problem of this, because. If they were to become available, that's great, I could put it in an order in a particular budget year and maybe plan. It's, we don't know when we're gonna get them, and and we don't know when we're gonna be able to order them or when we're gonna get them. So I gotta figure out some kind of assistance that works here, so allow us some time to regroup as a staff, try to come up with some, something better than this.
Chief, can I ask just one question? In in regards to the cars that you're behind and that were in this year's budget that you haven't been able to get. Do you know how many cars you're needing for this, like, where for all those in the twenty twenty-three budget? You know how many cars you would be talking to?
You hit the nail on the head, uh I presented the administrator with three different plans, a status quo, a happy medium, and then to get us back on track. And it was eight vehicles.
And before even with all the expenses thrown in and stuff, they're talking over a hundred thousand per vehicle?
No, so there there's a blend of of patrol cars, uh patrol vehicles are. Ranging just based on um anticipated increases of the Ford. Is not released a bit yet. Our representatives are telling us to anticipate a twenty percent increase in the cost of the car, so based on that. That puts the cost of the vehicle itself around fifty thousand, and then it's usually about fifteen to sixteen per outfitting of those. Um there's administrative vehicles that come at quite quite a lower cost, I'm sure those are in the range of thirty thousand and far less equipment needed. So we're about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand for those, uh CSO vehicle, that was kind of in between. So it's 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 one of the vehicles, so I would say probably the the media cost you're looking at is probably about fifty-five thousand.
Would we be able to put worrying in to take into account the value of those cars and say like, up to. You know, approved up to five hundred thousand for police vehicles, up to a certain amount for public works vehicles. So that we have a cap on how much can be purchased?
Yes. Just the Dominique.
Yeah, I think um what we have to do is we have to get them back to where they need to be, so that to me is a priority as we go into the next budget. The only other thought I had was, um you know, Jimmy, you mentioned that there was a four day window. Um I don't know if it's worth considering saying that you would have this a ability. Within, if the order time is within ten days or something, because we meet, or the board meets every two weeks, so. Um theoretically, if it's gonna be beyond ten days or or beyond fourteen days, you'd you'd be able to get the board approval. So um just another thought about what to put into the resolution, but we've got to get those cars.
I want to make a motion to table this to the meeting in two weeks.
Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Roll call please.
Hi.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries, all right, uh anything for administrator's report? Uh any bill of support?
Uh just want to announce that group scheduled the spring cleanup day for the spring and it's going to be on Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Our website has information about when items need to be placed curbside and what is acceptable in that.
Thank you, any trustee reports other than those submitted in writing, trustee Pierce?
I just wanted to mention that I know that the public works did safety training today, which is always important, so I commend them on that. They've also been busy in the last couple of weeks, snow plowing, fighting ice storms, doing debris removal. Uh they got four snows supposedly coming here tomorrow, if we can believe our forecasters, which gave us ten inches last week, but we never got. Uh but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that they're out there working. Well, thank them very much.
Thank you, anybody else over here? All right, trustee Dominique.
Just wanted to thank you for the recognition for International Women's Day and to just make for the record. Um that through participation on Facebook by members of the community. Um we've identified well over forty businesses in the community that are women owned or co-owned. And I think that it just gives um a really indic- good indication of the contributions of women to our. Revitalization of downtown and I'm I'm very proud to um be in a community where women want to invest, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um that does it for the agenda for the regular board meeting, if you have any. Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion uh carries, we adjourned at seven thirty, let's take a five minute break. And we will reconvene with the committee, the whole meeting. Call the meeting to order at uh seven forty, made a whole meeting, um roll call please.
Pierce.
Rose.
Amy.
Here, we have our mic sound for us.
Here.
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 All right, uh. Yeah, all right. All right, next is the um approval of the uh February twenty-second, eight twenty-three. May the whole meeting minutes is presented through a motion in seconds. Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Boothard, roll call please.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sure, yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, um we have a citizen wishing to address the board. Um is there anybody that wishes to address the board now, or if not, they can do it during the uh specific item that they've sent? We have a list.
Oh Jeff, you're so great.
So um. As we go through this, we're gonna uh follow the regular uh citizens wishing wishing to address the board. Procedure, I'll just have the clerk read that procedure so that when your time comes up. Um well um. We'll wait in this specific items, I think there's only one on the first side, so, okay? Yeah, so I'll um I'll start with the first item in the regular business is discussion regarding the future of the downtown park property. Located at Main and Depot, um we're getting down to the um. Very end of this process, hopefully, so. We have some building designs to go through and. Administrator Kind and uh Mr. Williams from, Andy's here from Williams. Yes, thank you, your honor, so um tonight, there's some updates to the building designs, some renderings and some views. That you're gonna see, um please feel free to comment and stop us and ask questions. You you got an email last week, um you know, basically asking the board for any any other things. That you want addressed prior to finalization of the package. So please, if there are other things on this, at some point, we have to stop talking about it, get the bid, which is ready now on the street. So please, if there are elements or questions or whatever, please get that information to us so we can get that properly. Our hope is that we'll be in a position at the next meeting um to ask, to request the board. Um finalize the bid package, so we got a couple of weeks here, you know, to answer questions, but we we need to. Bring it to a conclusion and determine what what it is we're building and what what are we putting on the street for bids. With that, um we have a PowerPoint that Andy, I'll get it prepared from Williams and I'll give my.
Right, thank you, Jim, good evening trustees, Mr. Mayor, uh as Jim said, we just wanted to give everybody an update this evening. On where we are with the building design, so we put together a little bit of a PowerPoint. I'll try my best to speak into the microphone and reference what's going on on the screen. Uh so last time we talked to you, a few weeks ago, we went over different exterior options, showed you some very conceptual um ideas. And we go to the next slide, um this this particular concept and sketch was um was the consensus to move forward with. So we've started developing some details and also started addressing some other questions and comments that. Everybody had regarding the plan of the building, so um before we get into the exterior, I just wanted to give a couple of updates with respect to. The site plan and the building plan itself, next please. We wanted to show both. We want to show both the site plan and the floor plan um to you before we got into the exterior discussion. Um just just to show you how this sheltered area that you requested be part of the design sort of expands the footprint of the building. So you're seeing a site plan on the north side or towards the top of the image is um the roof of our building. And then you you have the axis of the bridge crossing the creek and uh looks like the zumba is covering the Nury Pavilion. So uh we wanted to start off with that because this this enclosure that we've requested, just want everybody to be aware of the size and scale of it. It provides a really nice amount of shelter, um and even potentially the opportunity for seasonal enclosure. Um but it does take space, that's um that's really uh the the crux of this here. And if we go to the next slide with floor plan, we just wanted to show you. Again, um how this is developed, most of this is is nothing new. Um per some requests that we talked about at a past meeting, you um we were asked if we were able to. Get um some more plumbing fixtures into the multi-user restrooms, we've been able to do that without increasing the size of the building, so. That's a win, uh what we wanted to call everybody's attention to is just sort of the. Um number of tables that fit within that sheltered area underneath that, when we create space for. Um people to queue up around the windows, um we have space for of two four-person tables and three two-person tables. Under there comfortably, um there are some clearances that we need to respect with um with regard to ADA, so. I think this just helps us to understand the size of the enclosure and um or the shelter rather. And if that we're ever in to be enclosed, what we are really enclosing, so I just wanted to set that up. Are there any questions about that before we move into the exterior? Okay, let's keep going, um so we wanted to um show you how we moved from. This overall direction um with um with the natural stone with brick matching the rest of the. Design of the property and also some coloration um to match the Nury Pavilion. This particular sketch that we had, um it didn't really have colors and materials really well thought out. That's something we needed to take the last um um few days and weeks to look at, so if we go to the next slide, you'll see what this looks at. Um what this is starting to look like with the materiality um that matches the rest of the park, so you see that the. Majority of the building is the same stone that's already been selected and we have um throughout the park. We have um brick that complements the clay papers that are um that also is part of the bridge and part of um some of the paved areas. And we have um a darker trim proposed on some of these wooden elements um to help it tie to the Nury Pavilion. And we'll show you a few images um that I think really get to the. Crux of how this all ties together, that's really a goal here, you stated it yourself. When you saw some of our early concepts that you want those, you want all of these elements of the park and the building to flow together, to relate to one another. And that's a really, really good idea, so we just wanted to go through a few different images showing um the structure from different angles. So that's really looking at from the southwest, um next please. We'll just kind of take you on a little bit of a tour around the building, um just some different views, so you see all of what's happening there. So from the southeast, we see um the concessions windows, the shelter of the structure. And then we um doors to the two family restrooms and the drinking fountains, next. Just another close up of what would be the east side of the building there, kind of taking a a little bit of a tour around the building, next. Um this would be looking from Depot Street um to the southeast, this is a side of the building that we really haven't. Um shown you yet, but um the intent is to carry this stone and this detailing around all four sides of the building. Um so that it's consistent and that single door is really just a wider door that's the entrance to our storage and mechanical room, next. Then we um we also know there was um a desire to see some context, um um both within the park and within the neighborhood. We're still working on some of those images, but we wanted to show you here um how, when we pull back, how there starts to be a relationship between. Um the materials and the forms of the bridge and those of the building, so you can see the stone, the field stone on the bridge. Which is sort of the the different colors and then the arch itself um has kind of like some keystones or what we call solder courses. That kind of detailing um at the arch of the bridge is replicated over our windows in the building and over our doors. So that we're able to just tie all of this design together as much as we can, next. And then this image, I think, um does a good job of showing if you're in or right about to um walk into that Nury Pavilion. Um how the pavilion itself, the view over the bridge and then the design of the building really relate to each other. Very strong access there, so um hopefully that gives everybody a bit of an update on where we are with the design. And love to turn it over to you for questions and comments to make sure that we're responding and um can keep everything. And love to turn it over to you for questions and comments to make sure that we're responding and, um, can keep everything real.
All right. Steve Pearson.
Anything to say? I kind of like this little view right there.
All right. Trustee Mason.
The brick that you're using. Is that, if someone were to vandalize that, would it paint? Is that something that would be clean, easy?
Yeah, what we will, good question. So, um, any, for any of our Mason, whether it's Percher Stone, um, we almost always specify, uh, a graffiti-resistant sealer. We have to be careful to make sure it doesn't end up making everything look a little too shiny or fake. Um, but for a building like this, we'd always, always specify that both graffiti-resistant product. I'm sorry, you did that in the bridge, too. We just, yeah, we do that with all the stone.
Trustee Peterson.
I love all the pictures. It's perfect. I, I like it. Let's do it.
I see, I see relax. Just see with her. Uh, just one question. Sure, the, and I don't know if you know the answers, but how much walkway is there between the end of that bridge and the building? Because it looked very small in the overhead shot you showed.
Excellent question. Now, let's go back to that site plan. I brought these images just in case we had some questions.
Because right there, it looks really small.
Yeah, I, I would say, um, now, keep in mind that roof structure is an overhang and, um, there are some columns set in from that. So we probably have about 10 feet from the edge of the column, um, in the lower left-hand corner, um, or, um, from both of the columns on the south side of the building to where that bridge starts. Um, so it is a little tight. My suggestion would be to kind of flare the, um, sidewalk coming out from the bridge into that sidewalk that goes, um, east and west, um, to just make that breathe a little.
Yeah, I see that being a bottleneck because of how tight it is.
For sure. I think we, I think we can, um, address that with just some more thoughtful sidewalk design.
That's all I have. And I, it's coming into play now that you can see it all.
Sure.
Trustee Berman.
Um, I appreciate the, the detail that we see now. Um, it does help to give us a better idea of where we can set, um. I do, it, now that I'm seeing the bridge and the building, and it, I, it, I do agree that it does, um, flow into mine. It is cohesive, um. And I, I think for now, that's all I have. So.
Trustee Domeniak.
Um, I think, I think it looks great. My question, I think you addressed it, but I want to just make sure is that, that front, the overhang there, that you'll be able to, there's some opportunity for us to enclose that so that in more inclement weather or cooler weather, that people can still use the cafe and sit inside outside of the elements. Is that, how does that?
Sure, um, that, that is.
Address. I can't see that in the pictures.
Uh, great, great segue into, um, another side we prepared in case the question came up. So.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yeah, so, um, what we're looking at, we still have to figure out some of the details of this, is a way to enclose that, um, covered part of the pavilion with a combination of insulated panels and, um, kind of aluminum storefront and glass that can be placed in there, um, on a temporary basis. Um, and again, this is very, very preliminary, but it allow, this design allows us to use a combination of framing and glass and, um, some insulated panels, even some doors to get this enclosed for what, um, for whenever that may be a good idea. One thing I would emphasize here is that obviously that is going to add some cost, but the good news is this is something, these are really purchased products. These, um, elements that can help enclose something like this, this is something you could decide to do at any time. We could make it an alternate bid as part of the project if you're curious to see how much it comes in. But I think what it does show is that, um, it's, it's possible to get it to work. It, it does work with this concept.
I think that's terrific because one of my concerns early on, once we were talking about developing the park, is that it needs to be year-round. And so if we're going to have people in the park year-round, it's got to be a place for them to get out of the, out of the weather. Is there an opportunity for heating that space when it's enclosed? Or what, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, um, our, we, we would want to provide heat. Um, our suggestion would be, um, some portable, um, heaters, either electric or propane, um, that would be placed in the enclosure. What we don't want to do is hang something year-round, um, from the structure ends up becoming a potential target for vandalism. So, uh, our suggestion would be to handle the heat, um, on kind of a temporary basis, like many of you have probably seen at restaurant patios and things of that nature.
Okay. And then my only other question, could you go back to the floor? So early on, as we, you were starting to develop the design for this, we had a meeting with Mr. Faber and we talked about, you know, what kinds of things would be potentially sold here. And, um, have you incorporated his suggestions in terms of the type of equipment and space needed for things like, um, you know, ha- more upscale concession kind of things? Um, you know, we talked about beer and wine. We talked about coffees, that kind of thing. Is, is this going to allow for all of that?
We, we think it will. Now, um, this is, I want to be clear that this is not a full commercial kitchen that people
Right.
run a full restaurant from, but, um, between the serving area upfront and merchandising and counter space, we're providing plenty of convenience outlets. Um, several water taps to be able to handle, um, fountain beverages, any sort of, um, equipment that you would plug in, um, it really is not permanent. Um, the goal here is really just to make it as flexible as possible because every operator, no matter who you get in here, they'll talk to five different people and they'll all tell you five different ways to run this.
Sure.
Like it's set up. But we are trying to provide the right infrastructure, the right amount of power. Um, the number of hand sinks and three compartment sinks that are necessary to, um, make a food operation work and then a separate, um, dry storage room, just so, um, whatever the, whatever the menu is, it flows well, it's, um, sanitary, and it's the amount of space that, um, we know will help to make an operation like this successful. So, um, a long way of saying, um, yes, we have.
So it's got refrigeration in, freezing freezer in. I see the dry storage. Okay, thank you very much. I pray of your honor.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody else? I know we had, uh, Mary McWilliams wanted, she signed up to speak, wanted, um, take that opportunity now and anything that the board can address?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, so I was making a couple of notes. Um, I, I'm still anxious to see how the floor plan and the plan will coordinate with the other buildings. The two main buildings on that corner being the church and the historical society. Um, I was pleased to see the color of the stone be cor- coordinating with those two buildings. I don't think they're going to flash. I think they're both in the cream and red tones, so that's pleasing. Um, I was hoping to see more Gothic revival, um, elements because those two buildings are Gothic revival and they're, um, they've been here a long time. And I'm, I think we need to coordinate with those two. Um, bathrooms, have you considered making the women's bathroom larger than the men's with more, uh, stalls for the women? Um, and is there a changing area when they're using? Okay, so one more reason to make the women's room larger than the men's because m- more often mothers are bringing the children in than fathers. Um, and then my last comment is regarding the pavilion. I'm hoping that you will consider elevating it so that it is not, um, used by, by kids on bikes and skateboards to just fly through there and spin around on the, um, the posts. And it would, um, make it less look like a bus stop. And I think it should be elevated so that you can landscape around it, especially if you're taking away the, um, the little fence that's around the perimeter, like the one in, um, Chicago Park has. It's elevated. It's got that fence around it. It's got landscaping around it. Um, I think ours, the way it's been presented, to me, looks like a bus stop. And I don't think we want that in our, in our park. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I couldn't see who was speaking.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mary McWilliams.
Oh, from Preservation Commission? Okay, thank you, Mary.
Um, first of all, thank you, thank you for the, that, that commentary and that feedback. Um, a, a few of the things I think I can directly respond to. Um, we are working feverishly, um, as a team to get the model updated, to provide more context so you can understand the relationship of the building design, um, to the church and to the historical society. Um, right now, I think, um, in one of the images, you saw kind of a very masked out, um, block of the, um, of the church in the background. So we are, we are working to put those images together. We know that that's something you've asked for and it's just something that takes time. Um, we really, for the project schedule, wanted to, um, focus on showing you building updates tonight. But I think when we come to you as a team, um, to discuss, um, putting the project out to bid, um, you can expect to see some things that will answer those questions.
I have a question. So based on some of the feedback I sent, maybe the trustees are a chance to go around. Um, what is the, uh, schedule between now and, and what are we looking to accomplish now, the next meeting that we're here?
So then, um, the next, the next meeting that, uh, we're before you, we want to show you some updated imagery that the entire team has put together, um, showing how all the park elements, some of the context, um, surrounding context relates. Um, we want to see if there are any other questions. Basically, we will go through the project again comprehensively and say, um, trustees, Mr. Mayor, is this the scope of the project that you want, want to put out the street? Um, from there, we will have a couple of weeks of, um, really intense coordination and drawing to make sure that all of the utilities coming into the site, the building, um, everything that our team has to cross coordinate with one another will be, um, will happen. So we'll, um, be able to be out to bid. Right now, our current plan is to, um, be out to bid by the 20th of April and, um, bring you bids, um, at one of the meetings, um, one of your meetings in May, probably the second week.
All right, questions?
Trustee Peterson. Oh, first of all, I appreciate your comments about the kids skating there. Um, and I think in, in sometime in your future, we need to come up with a plan for the skate park and how we're going to deal with that area. Um, I did go down and look at the one in Chicago and it was raised and it was, it did have plants all around it. There were bushes that had been turned into homeless shelter for homeless people behind it. And it was full of garbage. I did not take pictures of that part of it. Uh, so I would necessarily think just for public safety purposes and being able to see what's going around that pavilion, that you couldn't have that shrubbery and brushes, that shrubbery there like that, unless maybe it's like a small garden with, with small flowers, you know? So I, I think we would have to think real carefully about doing the shrubs and stuff just because of what people do these days. Um.
Trustee, if I may, um, one, one other, um, one other thing that I know is on the minds of the design team with respect to the pavilion and, um, I'm sort of speaking on behalf of Lakota right now, but we know that raising that element would require a series of ramps to make it accessible. So, um, if, if we're up two feet in the air, that's 24 feet of ramp that we need up to it, um, to make it ADA compliant, you know, basically one foot of ramping per, um, per inch of, um, of raised platform. So that would significantly affect the design of, just by virtue of the amount of space we need for that. So that's, that's one thing. I don't believe I've heard the rest of my team mention that here, but I know that's one of the concerns they had with respect to elevating the structure.
And if you have ramps of that nature and you have a circular thing inside, um, back to the skaters,
Mm-hmm.
I can just picture them loving the ramps, seeing how, how high they could go and if they could edge around the circle on the race. I, I, so I understand why. So, I mean, that it would be nice to have it up so where bands and people could look down on other people's, their playing and stuff. But I think for safety and to decrease, decrease the, the skaters' attempts at having fun with that property, that may be, uh, go.
Yeah, one thing that, um, I, you know, our, our firm has done a number of outdoor venues for other municipalities. And, um, when there isn't a raised stage, um, what is often very successful is just some portable raised platforming that can be brought out for those. So if you have a, a guitarist and a vocalist out there for a concert, um, bring out a couple of four-bait platforms that are temporary, gets down a couple of feet off the ground for good sideline, but then goes back in the storage closet. That'd be a really efficient and temporary way to kind of handle that sort of thing without making the capital investment of something raised up and the ramping goes for it.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
I'm just wondering where we're going to store all the doors, the temporary stuff. I don't know if it works. Well, I think it's.
We're also working on the space needs analysis for that right now.
Yeah.
And a few square feet.
Thank you. Trustee Pierce.
You don't have any other comments right now?
Steve Luther. Nothing else at this time. Trustee Berman.
Nothing else.
Trustee Domeniak.
Um, I want to thank you for sharing with us the amount of ramp space that would be needed, um, if we were to elevate it. Because as you know, I've been a proponent of the elevation. Um, and I'm not a skateboarder, but, um, I don't know if you can go back to the team and see are there, I, I think Mary raises a good point. Is there a way for you to construct the, what's underneath that pavilion in such a way that it would not be attractive to skateboarders? And again, I'm not a skateboarder, so I don't know what that might look like, but I think it's something to think about. That's all I have.
I'll definitely pass that out. My three-day date is, we're about 35 years ago, but I'll see what.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, see you in two weeks, fingers crossed, right? Appreciate your time. Appreciate your comments. Well, thank you. Um, next item is a discussion on community crime concerns and response strategies. Uh, Chief Dutchow. You guys good at this? No. Can you drive, Jim?
Try.
All the power from.
Does I can?
Yeah.
You can't.
I don't think we can clear that all the way. So thank you for having me tonight. Um, as everyone's aware, there's been some concerning incidents that we've had in our community over the last probably a year or so, um, after the last rash that we had in High Hill Lakes, uh, the mayor asked me to kind of compile some data and present some, some trends that we've seen and how it compares to years past and what we're doing internally to try to, try to address some of those needs. Next slide. So just very briefly, we're just going to touch on three quick items tonight. Clutch.
Oh.
I have a big one. Let's go on the next one. I can't read that because those people are in the way.
Oh, my gosh.
What's happening? Um, there we go. Jim Kind, you have the, if you click the, uh, top left minimize button, the picture will go away until needed. Yeah. Yeah, they, oh, there. There you go. So we're just going to touch on a few quick things. Like, we already talked about some of the trends that we've seen over the last few years. A little interpretation of the data and what strategies we're using internally and what are options maybe to try to attack some of these issues. So one of the primary things I think we need to answer is, is Antioch a safe community to live in? Um, it's difficult to extrapolate through open source, um, portals and narrowing it down to the village. But there are some very good open source, um, resources. But there are some very good open source resources like crimegrade.org that will help you narrow it down by zip code. So just for comparison's sake, the six triple zero zip code as a whole achieves an A minus rating from crimegrade.org when it comes to community safety. We're coming at the eighty-three, eighty-third percentile, I mean, that eighty-three percentage of codes in the entire United States have a higher rate of crimes in Antioch. So I think we're doing pretty good. As comparison, just bringing it, just is a point of reference for you. The state of Illinois is a whole score of B minus, meaning they're in the sixtieth percentile. So sixty percent of states have higher crime rates than the state of Illinois. So we're outperforming on, on the state level. One of the things I think you're probably often confronted with as trustees is, is why don't I see police officers in my neighborhood? Why don't I see an officer monitoring stop signs, speed limits, actually closing neighborhoods? What I can tell you is we're there. You know, we're, we're a relatively small organization. We range anywhere between three and five officers on the street at any given point during the day with about sixty road miles to cover. I think you just can do the simple math and say that it's just not possible for us to be everywhere at once. As we talked about during the, the last budget session, the PD operated at a staffing level that had not yet increased since roughly two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Through the, through the last year's budget, we did add several additional positions and filled some vacancies that we had to the net of five officer increase. But it's important to keep in mind that it's, it's not like hiring a store clerk where you just put him on the job, teach him how to do it, and then a couple of days they're up and running. Takes us nearly a year to train the police officers from the time we hire them from, from academy date till the time that they're released on their own. And as you can see, going back to two thousand nineteen, the trends that we've seen with the number of service calls that we've handled, the increase of about net twenty-five hundred from two thousand nineteen. So while we're adding officers, we continue to see ourselves getting busier. Next. There's a little statistical snapshot of, of what we call index crimes. Those are crimes that we report to the state and to the feds. I narrowed them down to kind of provide a little bit of a picture of, of what we're seeing. Broke down homicide, robberies, and burglaries to try to kind of give you a little picture of, of the things that may impact people seriously. And then some property crimes, more of the more common ones, the unlawful entry of vehicles, the things that we've seen the rashes of, all other thefts, criminal damage to properties, and then theft of vehicles. Excellent. So in kind of talking about the numbers, you know, you did probably note that there were some robberies on there. What I can tell you about the, the data shows about those types of crimes themselves is the majority that we have reported to us are target specific, meaning that they're not random things that are happening in our community. Have we had historically, you know, the occasional armed robbery of a community store or whatever? Yeah, every community has. But most of the ones we're seeing have some sort of correlation to another type of crime. Oftentimes, there, there's connections to drugs and drug sales that are uncovered. Often bothers my mind that when somebody gets their, their dope stealing thrown, they call the police and think they're going to do something about it, but, but they do. Or though reported is my cell phone was stolen or my wall was stolen, but as it's investigated, we find that there's another underlying nexus to another type of crime. The increase that you saw in the other theft category has primarily been driven by the increases in retail theft. We saw a sharp increase of, in that in two thousand twenty, and then doing a little research on why we may have seen that. Well, really, the requirement that we have where we're, where masks, criminals greet, they can go into these stores, commit retail thefts, nobody thinks twice about wearing a mask. You know, ten years ago, somebody walked into a, into a Menards wearing a mask, raises some flags, right? But now it's commonplace. So it made, gave them a great sense of anonymity, and they were able to often escape unrecognizable. The homicides, there was a little clip on the radar that we have. We have experienced three in our community in the last twenty-five years. Again, none of them are random, random murders. They had some sort of pre-existing relational connection. The one that we had several years ago was, unfortunately, was involved a family dispute. One that we just had recently this year involved a, a drug connection with the two, where there was a pretty substantial long lasting interconnection between the individuals. Auto thefts, we saw an increase in those over the last couple of years. Those are driven by kind of the evolution of the, the crime syndicates, the, the gangs that are coming up in the city and pillaging car dealerships. We saw that here last year where a couple of our dealerships targeted a few different times. And that's, and that's not unique to Antioch. Anyone that turns on the news recognizes that this happened regionally. And the big one, I think, that really makes people nervous is the, the increase in the burglaries of vehicles. That's really the biggest category that we've seen an uptick in our, in our property crimes. And again, it's, it's just important to note, this is not unique to Antioch. It's plaguing all Chicagoan suburbs. And it's really being committed by a new type of perpetrator. Ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, when we'd have a rash of these, it was just a matter of time, you know, until, you know, Billy Johnson, kid from the neighborhood, talked to his friends, and he was going around, going through a lot of cars, looking for ten dollars in change or whatnot. This new breed of criminal, unfortunately, they're not interested in the property of the car. They're more interested in the car itself, or, or want to make them access to being the garage opener to your home. They're taking these cars, looking for them to steal from one community to go about and commit other, other crimes in, in other communities. You know, there's connections where, you know, I saw on the news last week, Libertyville, just historically another low crime town, you know, had a, had a, had a pregnant mother run over and severely injured because she was trying to protect her child from being carjacked. Random, yes. Predictable, no. But again, it's, it's recognizing that we're dealing with the type of criminal now that really has no respect for the sanctity of human life. Next. So breaking the numbers down, kind of what, what does all this data mean? Tells us that the odds of becoming a victim of a random randomized violent crime within Antioch still remain very low when it always has been. And, and all the data indicators are, we're working hard to keep that down. Property crimes have increased. I don't think anybody can deny that. However, the good news is, is that with some community cooperation, much of this type of crime is decisively preventable. Next. So one of the questions that I know I'm often asked, and I'm sure you guys are, is, is our elected leadership, is how do we prevent these alarming threats continuing to arise? And I hate to beat a dead horse to death, but next. Really comes back to trustee Pierce's favorite nightly routine, of, of the nine PM routine. Again, it's, it's, it's not necessarily about the time, but it's emphasizing the way to prevent a lot of this crime by ruining your valuables, locking your doors, closing your garage, turning on your lights, and making sure that your home is secure. Again, talking to all of my command staff and my, my supervisory staff that, you know, combined, we've got, you know, a couple hundred years worth of long experience. We have to go back probably ten years before any of us can recall an instance where somebody physically forced entry into a car. These have mostly been crimes of opportunity, preventable by simply taking the proactive step of locking your car. Now, in the last one, we did see some, something new for our town where these, these thugs came in and they were armed with firearms. That's, makes me nervous. I'm sure it makes you nervous. The timing was different for us, but again, these types of things are almost impossible to predict. And the best approach that we could take is to try to remove the incentives on them from remaining in our community. By locking our cars, what, what history has told us is that they come into a community, if they're successful, they keep going around the community and, and pillaging the neighborhoods and going into cars. If they go through a few and they find that they're not successful, they pretty quickly move on to another neighborhood. If they strike out there too, they're recognized that, you know, we're proactive here, and they move on to another town. Unfortunately, you know, as much as you need to displace the problem onto another community, sometimes that's, that's the best thing that we could do. And if our community does well, our neighboring community does well, pretty soon these, these thugs will move down to somewhere else and bother another people. Next. So beyond just some of this, the proactive steps that we try to encourage our community to engage in, there are some operational changes that we're taking internally to try to confront this new type of criminal. You may be surprised to know that probably on a weekly basis, we try to stop a car these days, and they just completely fail to stop. They flee, they run. Historically, our PD, like others, has had what would amount to nearly a, a no pursuit policy. Kind of the old, the old adjective was if, if you could shoot it, you could chase it, is what I was told when I was hired. And looking at what our community expects from their police nowadays, I don't think that aligns with the way we do things. So we're looking at our policies, working closely with, with legal, review those as well. And realigning them to what are kind of the new best industry standards for us. And then I, not that we're going to turn this into, to high-speed car chases every night and officers, you know, going a hundred miles an hour after somebody because they, they committed a speeding violation. But powering the officers to make reasonable decisions on the street, confront the very rapidly evolving situations that are in hand. I don't think any of us would be okay and comfortable with the fact that if we went into one of these neighborhoods confronting these individuals running around our neighborhoods with loaded firearms, likely intending to use them to confront it. And if they get in the car and speed off, that their police just lets them go. I think the expectation from the public is we do whatever we can within our power to safely remove that criminal element from our community. And at times that may be engaging now in a little bit different strategy than we had historically. As you know, we're also working towards increasing the number of detectives we have. Again, that's just a staff, staffing challenge that we continue to, to, to deal with, like other departments. But we do have a plan in place. Once these new officers are onboarded to increase the number of detectives, we have to investigate the crimes as they happen. And of course, we're also looking towards the possibility of employing new types of, of technology. License plate readers, for example, we've had a common theme of discussion, and I think we've kind of really hit a point in that debate where it's time for me to seek some guidance from the board. I think we have to make a policy decision whether or not there's something that you think is going to be beneficial to our community. So some things that I'd, I'd like you to take into consideration, or you can give, give me a little guidance, is looking at these, these different variables with the cameras. They're, they're not inexpensive, you know. You may look and think thirty-five hundred or four thousand dollars per year for a camera is, is not that high of a cost. But you look at the geographical design of our village, we, we identified nine entry points into our village. Each entry point is generally going to require two cameras, so you can catch them coming, going, in front, rear license plates. So if you wanted to, you know, I guess, create a, a circle around Antioch with automated license plate readers, you're, you're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy thousand dollars per year to do that. Certainly, we can scale that back and work with, with engineers to determine better placement. I think there's locations and hotspots and common entry points that we've identified that could scale that down. But still, you know, there's, there's going to be some sort of significant investment in any type of program for that. That kind of leads into placement. What, what's gets priority? I don't, I think it would be difficult to argue we put license plate readers near any community subdivision. I think, you know, it's going to be the haves versus the have-nots. Why does this, why does this side of town get protection? My side of town doesn't get that protection. So it's just trying to identify what truly is the priority for placement. We know we could probably run a supermity challenge. Just administrator Kindred, my discussion with him really brought up a very good point. You know, I've been really focused on, on IDON permitting with them, but many of our roads also run through the county jurisdiction too, which is going to require us to go through county permitting. And some of those roads intersect with each other, so we may have to have both state and county permitting to place a camera there. So there's just some challenges associated with that. We have to evaluate the effectiveness of the cameras themselves. What are we seeking to achieve? As a, as a cop, I'll tell you, as an investigative tool, hundred percent they're, they're a good resource. They're going to help us investigate these crimes. They're going to help us create timelines. They're going to help track offenders and suspect vehicles when we have patterns of crime. But oftentimes, I think the, the question that needs to be answered is, are they going to reduce crime rates? I've done a lot of reading over the last couple of months in, in regards to these license plate readers. In any place that you see that there's a, there's a, a touting of a reduction in crime, it's always a reduction reported incidents of violent crime. They've been proven to be relatively ineffective on reducing property crime. And very fortunately, we've historically had a low violent crime rate. I guess statistically, we don't have a high property crime rate either, but that, that is certainly more of a problem for us. And I really struggle with the fact of whether or not we're going to see reductions in that because we place these camera readers. For the reasons I've spoken to previously, such as, you know, oftentimes there, these, these crews are going town to town, stealing cars, they're coming into another community, committing these crimes in a stolen vehicle, it has not yet been detected or reported as stolen, so they're not going to be detected. So I don't think we're going to see a real reduction in the crime that we have. It's just an even more biggest investigative tool. Have to recognize that there's different views. You know, ACLU, for example, has been very opposed to these cameras. You know, there's a sense of big brother, and probably for every person in our community that you can talk to, that's going to be in support of them. There's going to be concerns over privacy and who's accessing this data. And do you know if Mr. Jones is coming at ten o'clock? Because, you know, the, the, the reality is, they are logging every license plate that goes past there. They are recording the time. They are taking photographs of these things. And while the information is controlled by law enforcement, sure, we would have access to that information. So what any other agency that has a, is part of that same platform, now if you're a flock member, you could view other flock cameras. If you're a vigilant member, you could view other visual cameras. So there's, there's legitimate privacy concern that I think we need to respect and take into consideration. Again, also considering if we replace these cameras everywhere, we are going to get alerts on that one. How many? I don't know. I couldn't tell you honestly how many stolen cars are traversing through a community at this point, there's stolen license plate. But when they do give an alert, there's going to be an expectation that an officer responds. So there's going to be an increased service demand associated with that. That's going to pull officers away from doing other things that they may, that may, you know, be classified by the communities being a higher priority. And then, of course, you know, we never want to lure anybody into a mall center. Of course, and the viewpoint from some is that we put these cameras up, we're safe. Crime isn't going to happen. And through conversations with police chiefs that I've had, you know, throughout Lee County and Cook County, that's just not what they see. You know, really, crime does continue to happen. These, these criminals don't care that the cameras are there, and they just continue to blow up most of crimes. Next. So really, some things you could do to help us really drive these crime rates down, goes back to the old adage, see something, say something. See something suspicious, call nine one one or report it, even if it turns out to be nothing. We, we never shy away from responding to something. I would much rather have our officer investigate something that is found to be unfounded rather than have somebody be hesitant to call or report something that could turn out to be a legitimate crime. We ask that you be an active participation in your own safety. That means, again, making sure you keep your lights on in your house, lock your doors, make sure your garage door openers aren't, aren't accessible. You know, it goes down to lock it, lock it, lock it. If you lock your things, you're not going to become a victim of these crimes, statistically speaking. Never confront anyone you suspect is committing a criminal act. I think that was proven very apparent in this last rash where we had some armed armed individuals trying to go through cars. And based on what we see in, in other communities, they're not afraid to use these weapons when somebody does confront them. So, you know, please leave that job to the trained professionals and call nine one one. Again, we encourage all our residents, business owners to consider investing in a camera. Again, while they may not prevent the crime, they do prove themselves to be one of the most helpful investigative tools to the police. You know, trustee Blue, I did, I did talk to the chief in Elwood Park about that program, so I can connect on that at some point too. Next. Again, just put my mission statement up there, just to kind of remind, remind everybody that we are here for you. That is our number one priority to serve and protect our community and work with our community to solve problems. I think if we all kind of put our heads together and process collectively, there, there's not a problem that we can't overcome. Next slide. Do you have to answer any questions or?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. In those numbers, can you, can you kind of break it down a little bit further into how many of those are domestic-related incidents that can be called in? Because you listed like the homicide, burglary, this, but it's the domestics that sometimes are the most dangerous for you guys.
Absolutely. You know, that's, as I started looking at some of the numbers, you know, there, there's additional index crimes that I could have brought to you with the numbers. You know, there are the, the battery offenses, but those are generally rolling into domestic battery offenses. So we kind of artificially leave that number to leave people to think that we have, you know, a far more significant chance of walking through the town and getting beat up. You know, the sexual assault numbers too, we personally have a rather high recorded incidence of sexual assault. But again, none of these that we've had are, are random crimes. You know, we're not having sexual assaults committed. Just, just as a matter of circumstance, there's always been some sort of pre-existing relation. Unfortunately, oftentimes, if there's a family connection there, we experience a, a, probably a higher than normal rate of, of incidents involving adults with a family relation to children. There's, there's a lot of connections that we investigate that involves, you know, a teenage individual, somebody that's a couple of years older that crosses the age of eighteen. So there's a lot of data that within the data, that can, that can skew some of those numbers, which is why I did a lot of sound things. So if you take a lot of practice, play it away.
Are you getting the resources you need to deal with with the domestic incidences, the dental health issues? I'm sorry, my concerns are whether you're getting the resources to deal with the, the domestic issues that go beyond just handcuff them, lock them up, and throw them away. You know, is there, is there things that we can do to make? Handcuff them, lock them up, and throw them away, you know, is there is there things that we can do to make it better for the guys?
So fortunately, and thank you, you know, this board has been very supportive, the department given us the resources that we need. We do have the resources to keep up, you know, with kind of especially the emergency service demands that we have. Where we where we just, we really have been impacted with our staffing comes. Hate to call it this, but it's it's nice to have some of your police department, right? You're always going to have those needs to have, you call nine one one, there's police officers coming, there's going to be a new doorstep in a matter of minutes. It's the nice to have, so, you know, having someone dedicated to your road to run radar on a daily basis for long term periods of time. You know, we continue to do our our neighborhood patrols, we continue to do our our vacation house checks, that sort of thing. But there's been some things we've had to scale that out a little bit, just to to keep up with that increase and in the service demands that we've had to call lines. Yeah, we've, I think we've got the resources. It'd be hard for us to try to make a true assessment of that until these new officers are are trained enough on the street to get a real good sense of of where we're at at things.
Okay, and then my other question is, a concern you had is one of your bullet points, cameras, cameras, cameras investigative tool. Is there some point in the future where we're going to be real time monitoring cameras, which means we have to put individuals aside to do that? And and respond to it, because, you know, it it's great if you can investigate a crime and you do it. But if somebody thinks putting a camera is going to stop the crime, it's not going to stop it.
Yeah, yes, I I understand what you're saying, I think. You know, again, you can put cameras everywhere, right? I think I think there, take Chicago, for example, you know, they've invested a significant amount of money. Into a camera network throughout the city, they've got shot spotter, they've got public safety cameras, they've got all all this very nice, very extravagant, very expensive technology. But what is the crime rate in Chicago? You see, it's going up, not only is it going up, it's bleeding into other communities such as ours. Not gonna lie, a lot of a lot of the crime cops we see are. Criminals that are coming up from from the city, they travel, they're mobile. They go down the south side of Chicago one night, next two nights later, they're up in Lake Villa, three nights later, they're here, four nights later, they're in Bristol. So unless unless you're willing to dedicate, you know, measure of coverage throughout the village and have somebody monitor that twenty four seven. I think the predictability of these things is difficult. I think what we've learned is, you know, you put a camera somewhere, odds are the crime's going to happen somewhere else, so I think it's impossible for us to. Put enough cameras up there out there to truly eliminate this type of crime. That's all I have, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
I'm a proponent of cameras, because I think they catch, they they don't prevent, they catch after the crime. They're going to catch, you know, we've we've got proved skate park township where they caught. The people and held them responsible. It always amazes me when I see Facebook posts that. Uh, whose dog is doing this on on my lawn? And it just amazes me that that in the early days, houses don't have water cameras, but they will catch perpetrators. So, on the license, as far as the license plate readers, the uh cost of the license plate readers. I think that could be a shared cost, because some of the money we get back at fines. Warrants and whatnot, with with with, just like the speeding, they could, we gave out a speeding, they could deal with. We we get that revenue back to the village, so. That's, you know, if we if if we do get a warrant, we we, you know. The bad guy is is caught before something happens, and it might be a resident that that we catch that award. But we get potentially that fine back to pay for the cameras.
Yeah, and and there's there's some creative things that we could do, you know, I've I've been taking a look at some communities that have implemented some ordinances. To help generate some some revenue. To fund some of these crime prevention initiatives, one of the creative ones that you see out there now is. If your car is is used in the commission of a certain crime, right, it's it's not stolen, and you let your daughter use the car. And she goes out there and commits a certain specified offense. Use the car, the vehicle owner are responsible for a fine associated with that. You know, we see a lot of a lot of communities using it to to deal with some of the retail theft problems. Because inevitably. Retail theft is committed, defenders flee, they go talk to the vehicle owner, sitting in the driveway, oh, I don't know who's driving. Right, so it puts some culpability for the commission of the crime, who who you're allowing to use your car. Track pushing people to be responsible, and then those funds are being used to fund.
And that's getting to be, I mean, insurance world, that's getting to be. It it it's amazing, it's getting to be where parents can be held viable. Or their kid driving, where they the parents could actually be held to get sued, you know, your kid's in a heat, why'd you live in pride? So that's becoming a reality, well, Johnson started that. So, yeah, that's 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 becoming, and the the tools out there are getting to help the officers to get more advanced. And you can't sit back and say, I don't want that analogy. And the problem is, the criminals, the bad guys are getting smarter. And more evasive, the statistic, and I don't know if you believe it or not, read that said. Name a statistic to me Sunday, fifty two percent of all cars potentially have guns in them. So next, and they and they said, next time you give someone a finger, just think they're ready to go in that car. That's a true figure, I don't know, but that's what they do, and they're they're the ones teaching all the safety classes for guns. So it's an interesting figure that there's that many people running around.
And you're a hundred percent right, they're they're using, they've been using our own policies and procedures against us.
Yeah.
They they know that most communities historically have been non pursuit communities, so then all they have to do is run. So we have to change and evolve for that, to empower officers to make smart decisions, obviously with the the safety of the community in mind. We we empower these these law enforcement officers out there to, you know, strap on a badge and and a gun and go out there and at times make life or death decisions. So I think allowing the supervisor, you know, them with the supervisor's guidance and input, you know, opportunity to pursue an individual when necessary. I think we have to trust them with that.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
Well, I'm a proponent for cameras as well. Unfortunately, we live in a town, I went. For our own safety, we need them, so I agree, and probably on most homes too, we should all. Forego the invasion of privacy and actually be more safe, so I I'm a proponent for that as well. That's all I have, your honor.
Trustee Buthard?
First and foremost, our main job here is, like the officials, is to make sure that we. Public safety of our residents here in Antioch, so no matter what, you need to make sure you're getting the funding you need and the support you need to. Your job. I am a proponent of cameras as well, and. Would be willing to look at trials and the block camera, whatever we need to do to see if they are benefiting along. Jump all in, yes, it's very expensive to do the trials, see how it goes, see where we're at at the end of the day. The chief mentioned this, but I reached out to. Mayor Saviano in Almonte Park, and he has a program that's very interesting, it's. A camera program, but where they offer, who they call rebate. For rebate, if you upgrade or purchase a new camera system. And allow the police access to that system, they will rebate in Almonte Park with a hundred dollar, up to a hundred dollars, I believe. And. They they had great success with people taking advantage of it, what is it, three hundred?
Yes, they were they were allowing rebate up to up to a hundred bucks, I think, I'm very serious, per per household. And I did speak with the chief, so the police department is not getting a direct link into that camera itself. But they were required in order to qualify for the rebate to provide information on the camera. Provide a photo of what the coverages are, and then the department created a virtual map of where there was cameras. So if the crime was committed in a certain area, they would, officers could pull up in their car where there's where there's resident cameras in the area and what they watch. So it's certainly a time saver, you know, that they were there, were reimbursing a hundred dollars per camera, and they did have three hundred residents.
And it was up to a up to a hundred, it was half of their house, up to a hundred.
It's a hundred and fifty dollar camera, seventy five back, goes to.
And what was interesting, after talking with mayor and then had this conversation with the police chief there, but. It wasn't like, it's almost, it's exactly what you were talking about, there are cameras that they have, block cameras, other things. They're not necessarily helping prevent crime, but what they are is investigative tool. I think you had one incident where they were able to catch, someone caught someone breaking into their house with their camera, got the alert, notified the police, and they were able to. Arrest them in the in the residence, but other than that, it was more of an investigative tool, but. I think, you know, obviously, we have budgetary constraints, but I think anything we can do to get people to get cameras, like you're saying. If it's something the ability to incentivize at some point to get access or get more cameras out there, I think it's like worth looking into. But we just need to keep supporting you and making sure your officers know that they have the support to 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 stop these.
Trustee Bourbon?
I, well, obviously, I think it's it's pretty obvious that I. I have concerns about the crime in our community and that. I do believe that public safety is is number one. Which is going to, this is going to come out seeming like it's countering that. I I understand the benefit of these. But I do not feel. I I don't know, I guess I don't feel that this is the the right answer. I do have issues with privacy concerns, and I I do believe that there are. Quite a lot of people that do have the same issues with that. My fear is that it will, I I don't want to have a town that is just severely. I don't know the right way to say this. I know in a way, we want we want the criminals to to know that they're being always watched, but we don't want. Private citizens, the residents, to feel like they're constantly with everything that they do being watched, and. I I think this is, I. I think there's other ways that we haven't, things that we need to try that. Before this is considered going, taking your stuff like. I I do, I have great privacy concerns, and I will say a personal thing that happened where I live. There was an incident where a vehicle was broken into, and I believe side garage door of a neighbor. And the criminals, they came there and they they looked up right into the camera. You could, there there was audio on it, they were talking, they stared right up at it, they didn't have masks, like, they didn't care, they did not care. And if we have. You know, it seems like the the biggest thing is this, obviously, because it's a license plate reader. But I I just don't see how that's going to be beneficial if they're stealing vehicles, and it it's just. So hopefully, that that makes sense, I tried to make it make sense. I I do care about what's going on, but I just don't think that this is the answer to this.
Thank you, trustee.
Well, first of all, chief, I I think your presentation was excellent. And I think the statistics that you shared were very encouraging. It's it's, and I'm not trying to minimize the reports of the criminal activity in the town, but it's kind of like. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, and so these more isolated incidents, which are alarming. Get a lot more play than maybe some of the other things that you talked about, and including the fact that we. Don't have a high incidence of crime, but certainly, you know, when these situations occur, people get very concerned. I think you've also really done a great job of positioning the conundrum that we face. Which is that so much of the criminal activity within our community continues to be property theft. And I I don't know what we can do, because you've done a yeoman's job of, you know, you're a. TV star, you're a radio star, you know, you're on Facebook, you're on all these different vehicles to say lock it up. And people aren't doing that, so. I have historically been against the idea of cameras, because I didn't like the idea of people thinking that Antioch was so unsafe. And I still have that concern, but I think the most recent incidents, both within our community as well as in Libertyville. Really have made me stop and take another thought about this, and. I'm not sure at this point in time that we should be making an investment in cameras in all nine locations. One question that I would have for you would would be, is what locations do you think would be the priority? And I'm I'm kind of along the thinking of, if we can identify which location or locations, one or two. Is a high priority that we implement the license plate readers. On a trial basis and see indeed whether or not they do deliver on what your hopes are for them. If we do do license plate readers, I think it's really going to be critical that residents. Need to understand that these are investigative tools, and that the data shows that they're not going to prevent. And that the way we prevent this is by people doing what you say at nine o'clock at night. And, you know, I I'm not trying to victim blame here, I know that people get concerned when people say, well, you know, lock your doors and this won't happen, but. You know, i- if you're not taking those steps, you're increasing your own risk. So I would be not adverse to looking into doing a pilot program, and my sense is. That the biggest challenge would be coming from the east. So I have a couple of other things I wanted to say, but if I could stop here and just ask the chief, if you were to prioritize those locations, how would you do that?
I I think we would have to look at what the data tells us, what our investigations have told us. I would say the greatest percentage, and I can't provide you an exact figure, but by large percentage. Most of these outside perpetrators are are coming from us from the south and the east. Mostly, I think, entering through the eastern eastern gateways of our community, a lot of times, we've been able to track the vehicles. That were stolen in our community or stolen in other communities used for crime. And within our community, they've been tracked back or located primarily in Zion, Waukegan. And then, you know, down 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 in the city of Chicago, we've had quite a few as well, so. The logic would tell us that those individuals are likely exiting the tollway at one seventy three, so I think. You know, if we had to identify kind of some target locations, they would predominantly be to to attack that that eastern and southern side of town.
Thank you, so I think what I would request is for you to come back, and I understand the need to be data driven. To come back to us with a priority list and a recommendation. But I think that that piece, and we're all responsible for that, we can't just rely on the chief to send that message out, is that. These are investigative tools, they're not preventive, and that the prevention really, you know, it's kind of like Smokey the Bear, only you can prevent forest fires, right? I think this is such an excellent presentation and so clearly put together and so educational that. I would recommend that, you know, you and your your staff consider kind of doing road shows, you know, go to the HOAs. Go to the community organizations, et cetera, and show this information to people so that. You know, they understand, put it on Facebook, put it on the website, you know, I think last year or a year ago, we made Joy record her presentation. Maybe that's something that we need to do. You know, I think last year or a year ago, we made Joy record her presentation, maybe that's something that we need to do um. I love the idea of the incentive program because I had actually written that down while you were talking, so trustee Blueheart's way ahead of me on that one, but I like. The idea of some kind of incentive or rebate program. I think the other thing is that we as trustees really need to support our police force and I'm not saying that we don't, but. Um you know, we get complaints from residents about speeding, we get complaints from residents about people running stop signs. I think it's incumbent upon us to say, you know, you need to report that, but you cannot have an expectation that there's gonna be someone sitting there. You know, we've got limited number of resources, we have a lot of thing, a lot of territory to cover, we can't have police sitting in one spot every day for a week. To try and catch one or two people that might be running a stop sign or even ten people that might be running a stop sign or speeding. Um the other thing is that, you know, we we talked about um the license plate readers a lot, but then you also mentioned this idea of. Adjusting policies on pursuit um. You know, I would have to look to you to make a recommendation as to how that would look and what adjustments you would make. I think to summarize my thoughts on this, um again, thanking you for the clarity and the the comprehensiveness of your presentation, but. We as a board really have to give the chief clear direction as to what it is that we want from him and his department. In order to address both a perceived and real criminal activity within our community. Because we all want it to stop and we're all looking to the chief to help make that happen. But if we think pursuit is something that we want to allow, we need to give that clear direction, if it's not something we don't want in. The department to do, then we need to let them know that, so um you know, I I I'm anticipating that this is not the last time that we're gonna be. Um hearing from the chief on this, but um you know, I think it's a really good discussion to have and there's a lot of opportunity to. Support the community and support um the police department moving forward. That's all I have, your honor.
Well, everybody gets two chances.
Oh my gosh, so trustee Demian, to kind of try to address where where I'm approaching it from, is it from a policy perspective? I issued a memo to my my entire staff uh this last week about that very matter. I'm just gonna read just this to brief a couple of lines out of the memo itself and help you give. Hey, an idea where I'm coming from. So it says, as chief of police, I must continually assess our operations, ensuring that as an organization, we're responsive to our community's needs and expectations as its guardians. Will not exposing anyone to unreasonable risk. My responsibility includes ensuring that the policies and procedures that guide our tactics follow the law. Align with best best practices and allow you the flexibility and level of discretion necessary to effectively carry out your sworn duty to serve and protect Antioch. I have concluded that our current pursuit policy has virtually tied your hands and our supervisors' decisions to a level that no longer reflect the law. Industry standards or the best interest of the community's safety. So I hope that gives a little clarity of where I'm approaching this from, um taking a lot of things into consideration. Um not not taking us to to a position of of being a rogue organization by any means. But just realigning how we do things to what would be considered modern practices and in the interest of the community's safety. And um it would be considered best industry industry policies for us.
All right, and I will go around the second, but um I just want to say that. When I see these videos or reports usually on Facebook, especially these most recent ones. Um I get angry about it, I feel helpless sometimes about it. Um pissed off, quite frankly, and I can't believe we live in a society where we tell the police officers, no matter what somebody does, they're not supposed to pursue a criminal. And I um trust our police force to take the handcuffs off them to do what they need to do within police protocols. Um to pursue these people and um let them know that they're not welcome to commit crimes here, I would hope that our other surrounding communities. In similar situations would do the same thing um and you know. In addition to that um have citizens understand uh that the police could do all they can. To arrest these people, uh but if they're not prosecuted, it's not gonna do anything, so um you know. As villages and public officials and voters, make sure that we're putting people in office as uh. State attorneys and prosecutors are gonna make these people not feel safe doing these crimes and facing no punishment, so um I support. Your policing efforts, however you they um the you and your staff thinks is the best which is of the town, I support. Any camera program that you guys think is necessary to do that, so. That being said, I'll go around a little more time.
I'll try to be really quick um. The most important thing I think about every day when I'm thinking about police officers is number one that they are safe. And that the public is safe in their presence. Uh I do know that there is an uptick in crime and I will fully always support the police officers. In the legal performance of their jobs, pursuing the criminal and and enforcing the laws. If anybody questions that, I will always stand up for you, but the key word was legally. Um Antioch unfortunately, maybe twenty twenty-five years ago, did have a pursuit. That went horribly wrong on Route eighty-three. And um I think we an officer was severely injured and never came back to work from that and some people passed away. So safety, 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 but enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. It's not up to us to determine what the prosecutors do, we can tell all their friends what a horrible job they're doing. But we can always tell them our police department at Antioch is the best police department and they're doing the best job they can.
Of course, and community safety is our our top priority, ensuring that we're not exposing the community unnecessary risk by our actions.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
So first of all, camera views, First Amendment, line of sight. There already been Supreme Court, anything I can see, the camera allows me to see. So there's no privacy issues, the bad guys, it's just the same thing, that's red cam, it's a red light camera, it's. It's only the bad guys, these things technology only goes off of the bad guys, it does not attract the good guys, it only alerts to the bad guys. So second, how many communities have right now?
That would not be a question I could answer.
Okay, there's there's multiple.
There's a handful with.
There's a handful, so you're going through those communities, so if there's a privacy issue, you're going through those communities, whatever communities are. So you're driving to this community, so your privacy invaded, no, no, because. Your license plate's getting red in those communities, your license plate's getting red in the toll road, every time you drive down the toll road, your license plate's red. By 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 the state or whoever monitors the toll road, they do the exact same thing. So is your privacy monitored, is your privacy, no, it's the line of sight, if they can see it, they can monitor it. The second, I would go so far for when an officer makes a mistake, simple mistake, it doesn't have to be a criminal mistake. Uh they can do something stupid by detain someone, they could lose their immunity. And we are as a village, we should be looking um for a a program. Uh for for protecting our officers outside of the insurance, so if they do lose immunity. That we find an insurance policy that they could they could purchase on the outside um. And it's it it wouldn't even be a criminal if they detained them illegally, it's just it would be a personal lawsuit to that officer. There's a whole lot of stuff and when and 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 some of the comments I heard today, um where do we put the cameras? That's up to the police department, they're the professionals, I'm not the professional, I don't think anybody up here knows where. Stuff happens, the accident records, that's why we have these folks here um. So. You know, you would trust the guys that come to the house, trust these guys, so next to Mary.
Mary. It's all been said, your honor, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Trustee Blueheart. Trustee Bourbon.
All right, I uh. I will say, based off of what Chief Betchow stated, as far as where. We know the majority of these criminals are coming from. If we were to do a trial. Over in that area um I ju- I just I'm not for doing cameras everywhere. Do it where we know it's most, you know, the most crimes coming from, um and then let's see. What we get with that.
I agree with that, trustee Bourbon, I think. You know, if you if you ask me to make a decision tonight on how many locations to put these, I I would probably suggest you start with one to be honest, because I think there's a there's. A primary entry in their community where. Well, most of these individuals are probably coming from, and it's easier to expand the program if it's successful. Like than it is to to sign and abide your contract or what it might is not.
Thank you, trustee Demian.
I I don't have any other comments, my question is, where do we go from here?
Jeff.
So so I think kind of the greatest thing I would just respectfully ask for would be a straw poll if or would like to see. Uh funding for some sort of trial license plate reader program incorporated budget, so we're kind of coming down to crunch. Budget. There's some work yet to be done, it's a cost and.
Thank you, I think the board.
The address the other part, I'm sorry, um. As far as the pursuit um. You know, our our officers, they there's a significant amount of training um that they have to go through. Um you know, even before becoming a police officer um. And I do feel that um. I think that they need to, we need to stop tying hands with our police officers um. We need to allow them to use their best judgment um. And I do feel that they have in our, you know, the community's best interest, so.
And and that they'll still be guided by a I. A stringent policy, a slightly less stringent policy that we have in place and. The attorney's office has recommended and they have have given it their blessing that it's appropriate, reasonable.
I will thank you for your presentation and hopefully get some. Good direction um. Next item on the agenda. Uh is um item number three, grant writer discussion, I'll lead this discussion uh quickly um. I I know we've discussed at our quarterly meetings hiring a grant writer, um I have a recommendation from attorney. Sully of to speak to um Freddie Schmody, who I think now in the packet there is receiving. And proposed a contract um. As you may or may not know, the state of Illinois just released another forty million dollars of grant money for uh local governments. Um next week we have our congressman coming to Antioch to do a walk around and look at different potential projects on Tuesday. Um so uh we. I personally think it's in our best interest to hire a grant writer to have on board to help with these projects, as you see from her contract, she charges one hundred twenty-five dollars. Hour um she has a cap, an annual cap of twelve thousand dollar investments, um doesn't have a cap on how many. Uh grants she writes, um so the only question that was raised at staff is. The administrator, if we get the grant, does she do the administration of it, I'm not sure, but I think a twelve thousand dollar investment for. That type of money is. And open up for discussion um. So uh trustee Pierce, do you have any questions or concerns?
I think at least we hear every year, grants, 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 why don't we use grants, grants, grants? They're very difficult to to process and they're they they always have screens attached to them that. Make the grants not as favorable as some people think, but I think for twelve thousand dollars to try it for one year. Is a good idea, see if grants actually are grants, 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 and I will say there was, there is a provision, I believe there that. There is a thirty day out clause, so we're not, we wouldn't even be locked.
Trustee Mason.
Rather than spending money on retail strategies. And I've been that I guess for grants, uh fire department uses, they're very successful, they're grant writers.
Trustee Peterson.
A great use of twelve thousand dollars, yes.
Trustee Blueheart.
Just one quick question, and I don't know whether you. That limit of twelve thousand dollars is. If she's having success writing these, does that cut her off at that amount, or does she keep working for the rest of the year? After the twelve thousand hours.
So she said that she's never gone over the twelve thousand dollars, she's been doing this for, I mean, how many forty years? She's never gone over the twelve thousand dollars um. I had, I asked her about it and she kind of, I'm not saying in a mean way, but she kind of mocked me about it, she's like, I've never gone over the twelve thousand dollars. So um I assume that if she gives us thirty million of the forty million dollars and using it hyperbole to make my point. Then we'd be fine paying her thirteen thousand dollars, but um I I think at this point in time, it's a cross that bridge when we get to an issue. In so much that she is not expecting to go over the twelve thousand dollars.
And then do we know how many municipalities she's representing now? I mean, are we gonna get, are are we competing against that?
I will say that she's um I did, she did mention it, I asked her, I think some, a lot of them were. Um either the city or south uh south suburbs, although I will say that um. She has been highly responsive in my case, so.
Um the closest suburb that I know. My my client, the Village National, Illinois, and that's west of Algen um. I've driven there from here, it takes an hour and I think thirty minutes, so I don't think that is a geographical um competition. But it is a growing, the one thing is it's a growing community and I think that there are some.
Trustee Bourbon.
Um I think, yeah, for this crisis, I think that this is is well worth it um. Yeah, as long as it stays around this, which. Yeah, I would be in favor of this.
Trustee Demian.
I think this is a fabulous idea, I think it's something that I've been bringing up for years um. I, yeah, I mean, if she can bring grants into our community to help offset our expenses, particularly with everything going on. I think it's it's a slam dunk, no brainer, my only question is, how how are we gonna ID the grants that she's going to be writing? Or is she gonna also search for grants or are we just gonna feed the grants to her and who's gonna do that?
The, that's an excellent question, trustee, and it's very excellent because the mayor brought that up on her phone call with her. And she is going to, she you know, she knows the people, she knows when they come out, she does keep. Um she does keep an ear to the ground on that, she also said. That we, kind of like with the chief said, that we do have an active role to protect ourselves and help ourselves, that we if we know. That we want to go into that area, we should keep an ear out and mention it to her, my suggestion would be. That um the mayor reach out to other local and statewide officials and let, how about state legislators? And let them know that this is how we're gonna operate in the grant game, because they're willing to help. It's just there's gotta be that interconnect, and the village has done a nice job before, but now having someone for the efficient price of twelve thousand dollars. Um I think we have multiple avenues to keep our ears open for that, does that help, trustee?
Absolutely, and I think any one of us that, you know, see any kind of a grant, I mean, I frequently see grants as I read the paper that are awarded to other communities, so. You know, to feed in to some clearinghouse, what we're seeing other communities get like supporter as well. But I think we go ahead and do this and she's gonna be worth every penny.
Um couple of questions to follow, one um I'm two things actually. Uh I think in this case, she has been sending me in real time things that are coming out, um those that you may or may not know that. I'm slow on getting back an email, I get bogged down on emails, so I probably need a staff member liaison monitoring. They come through and then secondly um. Because uh time is of the essence and given the amount of the contract, is there a way to sign this contract ratified at the next board meeting?
I mean legally, I have no problem with that because of the amount. Um I would just ask for, I don't wanna say a straw poll of it, but. Just the consensus of the board and if there are no objections to signing this, sending it back. And then having it ratified at the next board meeting, um I don't see a problem with that. Yeah, that's and that very good point by our um experienced administrator, it is under his spending limit um. So I really, I don't have a problem with it, I would like it ratified next time, just to close the real loop, but um. I I guess maybe I would ask to see if the board has any objections.
I don't hear any objections, that's gonna make sure that I'm not signing something that's not, you know, fully supported, okay? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Um, it'll be exciting and hopefully. We'll have a new chart next year with all the grant money. Projects. Um, all right, next item is number four. Uh, discussion of Heron Harbor, Woodland Ridge resident health and environmental concerns regarding the lease agreements. And installation of Chicago S M S A Limited Partnership. Horizon Wireless five G antenna equipment on the water tower located at Zero Bowls Road. Um, as the trustees know, we received. Several emails from, I would say, three or four different concerned residents. Um, I had a request to put this on a committee of the whole meeting, so uh, we do have this as a discussion point. I believe two individuals are signed up to uh, speak about this item or potentially speak about this item. Um, so. Why don't, it was a little, I mean, why don't I have you come up here and, you know, speak to the board and then I'll let the board respond? I don't know if Jim has the uh, clicker? Thank you. And just state your name for the record.
I'm Shannon Kramer. Uh, thanks mayor and trustees. Uh, I live basically at one bowls. I'm concerned, we've been here for eighteen years. We built in the Woodland Ridge subdivision. We have three children that went through the school district. Our oldest son, who's twenty-five, has Down syndrome. He lies all over the place. I'm in technology, so five G's an unknown. Especially if you're within four hundred meters of a tower. Uh, there's different. Literature out there that says it's safe, some says it's not safe. Some say it brings down property values, et cetera. I think the biggest concern is that. It was approved and it being installed. And even our HOA was not aware of it, to my knowledge. So therefore, the community wasn't involved. So to me, living fifty meters away, I'm pretty concerned. In fact, we're so concerned that we're considering, even though we love Antioch, moving away from Antioch. Or at least from the tower. Because now I I also understood that there was potentially another site discussed. Where it could have been installed. I'm not sure if that was anywhere near our homes as well. Uh, and if there's, you know, again, concerns around safety or around property value. So that's really the concerns I have. Uh, and I appreciate you listening to our concerns and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Uh, Matt Holmes here. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you to the board for hearing me out here. I echo Shannon's concerns. Uh, the research is not up there yet. We don't know enough about it. Um, a couple of things that I would just ask is, uh, as I, as I read through it and I try and educate myself. Seems like there's liability issues in terms of insurance coverage. Um, if there are future litigation claims in terms of health, safety, who is responsible for that? Is there any consideration for the board to review that, understand? Any sort of issues that it could implement for this uh, community as well too? Um, I'm raising a family, got two young boys. We wanna be here, we wanna stay here. We just wanna make sure we're safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what you had to spot, is that you stand one of the dresser or the board? All right, all right, trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll say my part on five G. Um, I apologize if I'm a hour late, but I I've got a lot to say because uh, my, my trigger's been pulled on this one, so to speak. Um, I have an article that I'm including in what I'm saying, that I'm gonna read really quickly. It's by Sasha Sagan. Um, in twenty twenty-two. He writes, is five G safe? Five G conspiracy theories everywhere, but you need not worry. Here are the details of why five G is safe. Online conspiracy theories play five G for everything from cancer to coronavirus, but they tend to fall apart. Uh, in the face of actual facts. Low band and mid-band five G are based on radio frequencies that have been used for decades. T-Mobile's low-band five G uses UHF TV bands, you know, that second dial on the old TVs that you had to turn. Um, which have been used since nineteen fifty-two. T-Mobile's mid-band has been used at least since two thousand seven. Part of it at first used in nineteen sixty-three. AT&T's low-band five G is on cellular frequencies used since nineteen eighty-three. And is no more powerful than the previous systems on those bands. The C-band is a new band of wireless communication, but it is important to see where it fits. At three point four five to three point eight gigahertz, the current C-band is sandwiched between the extremely popular common two point four. Gigahertz and the five gigahertz Wi-Fi bands. It is not going to have any effect on those pervasive already in place Wi-Fi networks still already have. And though conspiracy theorists tend to look askance of Wi-Fi, mainstream science says there is no evidence. That Wi-Fi has harmed us. The World Health Organization says any health effects of low-level electromagnetic fields. If they exist at all, are likely to be very small compared to other health risks that are keeping us facing every day life. The greatest five G worries in the US tend to be around high-band millimeter wave five G. This is the short-range type that requires a lot of small cell sites, so the infrastructure is more visible than it was before. The ironic thing about worrying that millimeter wave will fry your cells isn't that it is too strong, but it's too weak. Is blocked by leaves, walls, glass, cars, clothing and skin. Power levels, when you're talking about five G, are extremely important. Bluetooth and microwave ovens run on the same frequency at two point four gigahertz. The reason your microwave oven can cook food and your Bluetooth headset can, is your Bluetooth headset is many thousands of times weaker. A flyer, a firefly is a blowtorch and five G systems are more like a firefly compared to that blowtorch. Studies of millimeter wave have shown that it doesn't penetrate human skin well. And that its strongest effect at levels of power higher than any five G network use. Is that it makes things slightly warmer. At the levels five G networks use, there is no perceptible effect on people. I want to take a moment to read that above. As I, as I have taken the time to review the information both against and for five G. There are those on the board who believe that if you don't follow their dictates or hyperbole to the nth degree, they have ignored them and rushed your decision. I studied on my own, reached conclusions on my own. Sometimes my conclusions will match yours and sometimes they won't. It does not mean that I am not doing my job or voting precipitously. In you windows remarks that suggest otherwise only. Do harm or disrupt or shame the board. When I vote, when I vote on something, I am known to be very vocal in why I'm voting where I am. Many times I have voted against the majority of the board. It is that vote which determines the actions the village staff must take. It is never just my input alone. Those board members who believe village staff who legally work for the administrator under the mayor. Must do what they dictate or the whims or follow their whims or sadly mistaken. It takes a majority vote, in some cases a super majority, for policy and direction from the board to take effect. I am just one voice of seven. On occasion, I may forget myself. And elevate my stature to a higher degree than what I just raised. But I never forget how I put my socks on the same as everybody else. To demand investigations and spending the money is to find out why my individual directions aren't followed. Would be political hubris, wasteful expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Back to five G, five G is not causing coronavirus or anything else. Millimeter five G has been certified as safe by the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection. The technology has been studied with the only negative detective result being slightly heating affected. Power levels far above any transmission level permitted by the FCC. Even the American Cancer Society states on their webpage. At ground levels near typical cellular base stations. The amount of energy from RF waves is hundreds to thousands of times less. Than the limits for safe exposure set by the FCC and other regulatory authorities. It is very unlikely that a person to be exposed to RF levels more than these limits just by being near a cellphone tower. And this is what I believe, I other that I study everything else. There is radiation all around us, the cell phones we hold to our ears. Or lay on lamps, the microwaves in which we cook our food. Even the streetlights above our heads, the power lines that surround our homes and bring us the power we need to live our daily lives. Items such as Wi-Fi routers in our homes utilized by G. And the TVs which we flock in front of our kids, which we pop our kids in front of. Or lay in bed and watch all night also radiate. To live our lives in pure progress and technology lessens who we are and how much we have accomplished. I remember when I had to pull over to payphones to conduct my work. I remember how everybody was told to carry a dime for that emergency phone call. I remember when two soup cans and a string were the only phone I had. I remember being amazed when my grandmother had got a party line. There are so many advances that occurred in my lifetime, which. Have advances into the future writers could only imagine twenty, forty, sixty years ago. In fact, Jules Verne's, one of my favorite authors, was imagined in eighteen sixty-nine. But it took until our lifetime today to make it a reality. There are those who build on the fear of others and use it for their own gain or purpose. I call it the hyperbole of terror. Be afraid that your ship will sail over the edge. Be afraid that a light bulb will emit unseen radio waves and harm those around it. Be afraid to build a car and let's keep using horses and wagons. Be afraid to fly a small wooden plane on a beach and be afraid to sail around the world. Be afraid to stand up for warlongers and dictators. Be afraid to learn new science and be afraid to face new worlds and travel in this space. Thank God for those who weren't afraid and brought us forward into the world we live. I will admit there are some things we could do without, such as those on social medias and pundits who use it. Tales of conspiracies, terror and sacred society or Chinese plots or so forth to derail any form of progress. For those of you who disagree with me on five G and its place in our world, I'd say that's okay. We are a world of different opinions. It does not change mine. Unlike most on this board, I do have experience with radiation from my days in military as a radar expert. Who dealt specifically with high-power radiation for targeting the enemy. We had to follow very exact rules for radiating. And there were distances that we followed when radiating to stay clear of in hopes of having families. The FCC requires the same of any transmission source. I read concern about four hundred meters possibly being too close to live near five G tower. And I don't know about fifty meters, but to add perspective, Lake Michigan is two hundred eighty-one meters at its deepest. I believe three G and five, four G have the same issue as five G and they have been here for quite a while. I've spoken to my beliefs that to everything in our complicated lives. Five G is no different than any other concern presented by current technology. The only other safe course is go back to a time that no longer exists. And for a sitting trustee to state publicly or privately that this board does not care about the public. Or its safety is so far beyond the pale, they should apologize and publicly retract their statement to that effect. I know that can be done as I have the courage and wisdom to do so when I set the rule. It is okay for them to disagree and state they disagree. Cause I know every member of this board, including myself, cares about the public which we serve. We are being asked to revoke our agreement and require endless studies and evaluations. Using only the information provided by residents or a trustee which comes from their own sources. I am saddened that some on this board, they feel that it is that easy and they have, may have advised residents of such. There are laws and regulations we much follow. Such as the Tellman Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six, section seven oh four. Which controls how we allow or don't allow placement of cell sites. It prevents us from limiting their location based on RF emissions. In fact, as little as we may like, the law requires us to assist in helping cellular companies with placement. And I think the Supreme Court has backed that up. So when I voted yes, I wanted everybody to know was with the full understanding of the facts and the requirements. Unfortunately, others may have voted differently based upon their lack of. And that's why I voted yes for five G. I believe in it. I believe in the future. I believe in technology.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason?
First of all, your son. Always waves back. I always make sure I wave that. I live in here and I remember that. I get kind of bashed when I said it was a bad form to start the conversation. That kind of pushback. And I forgot who did that. There's a gentleman, Michael Fallow Mohammed. On the page. So seems like it's impossible past no one of five G projects at politics, that's. Violence is the only option that's worked in Europeans. So he's calling for, he's calling for violence. So I don't know if he's calling for violence to us. Or he wants to destroy our water tower.
I don't even know who that is.
I don't even know who it is either. So. I think the police should, should investigate this guy. So that's why I I said it's a bad form, because people go on Facebook, Facebook bullies. I voted, I voted because. Uh, I, and I understand, I one hundred percent. Understand what you're saying. I voted because. Um, one, the FCC kind of regulates, we we have no choice. Um, eight years ago. Jay was sitting over there, part of the the veteran stuff. That was gonna be an AT&T tower. And it got all switched up. But when you say the, the board or or or. You know, Greg and everybody else who's the master is all screwed up as it is. Didn't know about it. Well, everybody, everybody can sign up to the newsletter. It it's, it's not. Greg or or whatever units over there. It's fun, everybody can sign up to get the agenda. Well, eight years ago, that was put on the agenda and it was just switched from AT&T over to. Verizon and the reason I picked, I I I said is, is Verizon just doesn't work. And everybody's alarm system backed up. If someone snips. You know, the, the, that's, that's backed up for everybody's alarm. And and the cameras and everything else. It doesn't, and and the, the signal doesn't work and we're all regulated and we have to, we have, with our hands, it's basically tied. So I get your concern, the feeling concerns, but sitting up here, we had. Basically no other option. You could sit there and say no and and we, we have no other option, yeah. And 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 unfortunately, I've got people that sit there, I can't, I can't make a phone call. This is a Verizon phone. This is a village, village gets the phone, that's why I brought it, it's open. But it doesn't work in, in Heron Harbor. Just doesn't work. I got T-Mobile, T-Mobile's tower is right over. So T-Mobile works, works perfectly. I had a lady. And I don't want to sanctificate the, too long, but I, I, I had a lady, she came in office and she, she claimed. Um, she was allergic to radiation. And she brought a radiation, and then I got four radiation to my keyboard. Which I was actually surprised, my keyboard put radiation. So I get every, everybody, so I was surprised that it's that. It threw more radiation than the phone of my, my wireless keyboard. So. Key point is. I don't understand why people don't sign up for the newsletter that comes out. It gets every meeting and. You know, I'm signed up to funeral homes, so I know. Um, any of my friends are, that show up there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, you know, it's, 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 you know, in contention, it's not, you know, it's, it's not hard to not, not get. People's door to say, hey, this is what's gonna happen. It's, it's. Every individual's job to buy a newspaper. To find out what's, it's, it's no different than if, if a rezoning happened. And if you're, you're crazy, like a reason, how do you stand it? How is it too public? And that someone doesn't knock on your door, some people get letters, but then other people may have to be the newspaper. That's the unfortunate part. And it, and it started, this project started eight years ago and that was posted. On, on, on Heron Harbor's webpage that who voted? For, for the AT&T that, for that tower to go up there. And that was unanimous vote. And it just switched from AT&T, AT&T to Verizon. That's all that happened this last vote. And some people voted no for it, but it, it already went through. We, we had no control. And to stop it now, we can't stop it now because the towers are already up there, unfortunately, and, and.
Well, I appreciate the history.
Thank you. Yeah, and no, no problem.
It doesn't make it feel better.
No, I, 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 and I understand that. But if there's just, there's just a long history and couldn't do, you know, it's been eight years ago and, and, and we said. But if there's just, there's just a long history and couldn't do, you know, it's been eight years ago and, and, and we said so much dysfunction with the Harrenharbor Board and I read your pain. I've lived there since, um, I started on Harren Drive was the first house and I went, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go all the way back to unit seven because it's quieter and I get every time the Canary wanted to see the mansion. So I made that mistake. Everybody turns around and my driveway. So.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce.
I don't have anything to add to that.
Trustee blew there.
Yeah, um, there's not a whole lot of protection on five G. Um, according to the, uh, United States Supreme Court, we really don't have a choice.
That's it. Sure enough.
Yeah.
I appreciate your concerns as well and I read the letters and uh, the only thing I'll say about it is, is when this came up originally, I did look into it and tried to research as much as I could on unlimited time, but did spend some time looking into it and like you mentioned, I believe you even mentioned there, there, there's not a thick science on this. It's kind of, it's all over the place. You do one article, it says it's perfectly safe. Read the next one. Says there's a potential, but none of the others. So my, my view is it's kind of and due to the limitations of what we can and why we can and cannot allow those types of towers. My vote was for allowing it and but I also agree that we need to do follow-up and, and do a better job of alerting residents at times on different things. So I think from that we could take a look at, at, you know, and, and future towers if they're coming in. Do we want to look at a notification process to do for people and a heads up that is, it's, it's on the agenda and so forth. Um, I wouldn't be against if the board wanted to do some testing down the road after operation of to make sure that the measurements are within what we're being told they're going to be and so on. Uh, and I know that doesn't take away the concerns you have, but I think we need to work together moving forward to figure out how we, you know, make sure that it's safe on the board. If something was to change with the science down the road, we could look at that.
I appreciate that suggestion. Actually, that was a suggestion we had. Obviously, this would replace, would go in place. And that any type of measurement, especially for the homes in a very close proximity would be welcome, obviously, to say, hey, it's within FCC regulation limits or something and don't worry, it's, you know, it's deemed safe, at least according to the literature we have. Right? And that may go a long way to show that. I know that, uh, the way five G works, it's, it's, uh, you know, supposed to be, uh, parallel to the ground. But it can also be scattered if it's not tuned correctly. So again, you mean, of course, you know, us living very close to it with, with young kids at his house and families, you know, if we had some type of test afterwards, after installation to say, we did some testing, it's tuned correctly and it seems safe, that would go a long way.
Jim, is that something we could ask the Verizon or their supplier to please do and ask them to do it at their expense and, and see if they, they could say no, I guess, if it's not in the contract, but if not, if it's something that's reasonably, uh, uh, cost-effective to be asked, or it's not that expensive to test. If the board agrees, I would like to see us at least offer that to them so they have some semblance of what is happening with that once it's up and running.
It's free to ask, you know, whether they comply or not, I don't know, you know, but, um, if they, if they don't, I, I can't be, I can't imagine it would cost a lot of money to have a test done. I don't know how it's done or what equipment is needed or, but we could look into that.
If you could, if you could just report back to us and ask them that question if they would be willing to do some testing of their home's surrounding area, different areas or whatever it is. And if they are, great. If not, if you could report back on what it would cost to do some testing from the village's side, just to make sure. And hopefully give them peace of mind that this isn't doing some damage.
I certainly will look into that.
Yeah, thank you.
Me and Al, so we're on the Facebook page. Thank you.
Trustee, is Mary Domeniac?
I don't see her anywhere.
I'm still here.
Oh, you're there. Okay. All right. I did see your picture.
Yeah, I just, my head hurt, so I didn't want to.
All right.
Did Trustee Berman have something?
Oh, I'm going to just go, Trustee, you're just anticipating if you're there.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm here.
All right.
Did you, is it my turn to speak or I thought? Okay.
Um. First, I, I would like to address what was said, um, before I get into the other stuff. I, I, I'd like to say that I don't be, I, I take it as being called a conspiracy theorist. That's how I take what was stated before. And I don't appreciate that because that's not what I am. I've provided facts. I don't think that's, that's fair. I didn't want to read this, these, this next thing because I've already stated a lot of information the first time around with this, um, but I don't like being told that, that what I've stated is, is irrelevant or conspiracy theories. Verizon Wireless, I'm going to start with them first. They warn their shareholders of risk, but they do not warn their consumers or the, the neighbors. They warn consumers, but not neighbors. So they're, and that's found, this person right here, that that's, that's what they do. It says, "Our wireless business also faces personal injury and wrongful death lawsuits relating to alleged health effects of wireless phones or radio frequency transmitters who may incur significant expenses in defending these lawsuits. In addition, we may be required to pay significant awards or settlements." And that's Verizon Wireless Communications, twelve, uh, December twenty twenty. It's the ten K file. It's right here. Okay. Now, I understand that when it comes to municipalities and the placement of these, um, devices, that we really, we don't have much say in it because we are, um, forced by the FCC to place them. However, I do believe that, um, I think more could have been done to, um, foreign residents. Um, I'm not going to go any further into that. But I would like to go into the FCC. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I'm sorry. Um, so the, I'd like to clarify. So the, you, the FCC, they do specialize in the technical issues that make communications function. However, they do not specialize in the health and safety effects of this technology. There are, there is strong growing evidence that there are risks, um, that come with this and they're using technol, or they're using these, their guidelines are based off of information from nineteen ninety-six, okay? And I have links to these, the, the, these next two things. Um, it does show that a cumul, cumulative daily radiation exposure is associated with serious health effects, including cancer, altered brain development in children and reproductive damage in men. Now, that's not, nineteen ninety-six, do you know what type of a, a phone, cellphone was it all? It was a flip phone. See, I believe it was Samsung, a flip phone that not many people had. Now, think about how many people have cell phones. And then you have microwave, microwave appliances that have these waves that are emitting these things. So now this information, these studies that the FCC states from nineteen ninety-six, those waves, all that is being, that was being emitted at that time is significantly less than, than what is being emitted now. I'm sorry, I, I, yeah, the nineteen ninety-six stuff is, it just doesn't cut it for me. Two thousand and seven and two thousand and twelve, there were thousands of studies showing biological effects from low-intensity EMF, including over eighteen hundred reference summarized in, uh, the conclusion of the BioInitiative Report, demonstrating immune system effects, neurological effects and cognitive effects even more. Now, I, I know it was mentioned about something about five G causing COVID. I never once stated anything about COVID or five G. So I, I, I don't know where that came from. Two thousand and eleven, another study funded by the US government was published in the Journal of the American Medical Association in two thousand and eleven. Twenty seventeen, during review of its wireless standards, the FCC refused to do a detailed environmental assessment of the submissions on radiation safety limits. They refused to even discuss it. Twenty eighteen, a massive two-decade-long study by the National Toxicology Program, part of the National Institutes of Health, found clear evidence. Twenty nineteen, the FCC rejected the need for a protective policy to address reducing exposure when they reviewed their standards in twenty nineteen. Instead, the FCC decided to rely on exposure limits, as I stated, that were established in nineteen ninety-six. That same year, the FCC voted unanimously to shut down its review altogether. In fact, the FCC stated that they didn't feel that anything had changed. US Courts of Appeals in Washington DC disagreed, however. Twenty twenty-one, the court, in fact, ruled in August twenty twenty-one that the FCC had failed to meet even the low threshold of reasoned analysis and finding that its limits adequately protect against the harmful effects of exposure to RF radiation unrelated to cancer. It's unrelated to cancer. The court did not take position on the scientific debate on wireless radiation effects. It was scornful of the FCC's heavy reliance on three conclusory statements from the FDA about safety. One judge challenged the FCC's claim that an inter-agency working group was closely monitoring concerns about wireless exposure on the FCC's behalf. In fact, the group hadn't met since twenty eighteen. The court stated that the FCC waved off any concern about protections for children and ignored substantial evidence of potential environmental harms. The FCC said nothing about the potential impacts of many technological changes which had occurred, including five G that had taken place since nineteen ninety-six. The court sent the issue back to the FCC to once again review its twenty-six-year-old standards or provide a better explanation, justify the FCC's continued use of twenty-six-year-old standards. The FCC has yet to address the situation as far as I could find or take any formal action. In fact, the FDA, the FCC's federal partner, stated that the FDA is not working with the FCC and any responses to the court ruling. A federal appeals court in twenty twenty-one was dismayed by the FCC's lack of reexamining its standards. It criticized the FCC for its very brief analysis. The court accused the FCC of rushing off evidence of potential harm and failing to explain its reasoning. The FCC silence, FCC silence, the court said, left unclear whether the government even considered any evidence in the record. The court then ordered the FCC to revisit the adequacy of its safeguards. The FCC does not have in-house health or medical experts. The FCC safeguards do not account for the vulnerable, the vulnerable such as children. The FCC has even gone as far as preventing local consumer disclosure measures. They consider them overwarming. There are no industry-backed studies. There's a database of over a thousand peer-reviewed studies published since nineteen ninety, which investigate biological effects from wireless radiation exposure. Seventy-seven percent of those studies found significant effects. Seventy-two percent industry-sponsored, industry-sponsored studies report no biological effect. So how can you have such a different outcome from one spectrum to the other? Progress completed a multi-year defunding of the EPA's Wireless Radiation Group, therefore stopping them from researching the issue. Twenty twenty, in November of twenty twenty, a bipartisan state commission in New York, New Hampshire, charged with investigating five G issued a detailed report concluding a significant threat to human health and the environment. The commission's recommendations included that all new wireless equipment be at least one thousand six hundred and forty feet, which is five hundred meters from any resident, school or business. Verizon states that their goal is economic growth. However, how much economic growth do you think that will occur? If you have physically and mentally ill people, we do not know the, the effects of this. We haven't studied it enough. As far as adding new things, we, we have so much new technology that we just continuously add um, to all of this. And I think that it's a shame that the, like I said, I know we can't do anything. A village doesn't have the money, let's face it, to fight the FCC or to fight Verizon. We're basically heavy-handed by them. They, this is just the way that it is. But I do not think that it's appropriate that we ignore resident concerns when they have them. I think we are supposed to be here to listen to them and let them know that we care. And sometimes when you, if you're having a, a conversation and you say no comment, I think that can be construed as anything, really. There's no comment. Honestly, I feel that this is, is, is an issue. It's a human rights violation because these, this is being forced on tons of people without their consent. And I don't, I, I don't understand how any other human being can be all favorite now or not understand that. There are children that live over there. There are people that live close to it and they have concerns and they want it to be listened to. They want it to be responded to. So I'm not quite sure, you know, why I'm made into the conspiracy theorist on this or why I need to be interrogated over doing my job. I did my job the first time. I spent a lot of time researching it. I'm not saying anybody else has sit here and, and, and read off other stuff, you know, all the information that I gave the last time, but I had it and I was willing to provide it to whoever wanted it. I had one trustee request that information. And unfortunately, because I had sent it to the wrong email, it was never received. So I, 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 I just, I am, I'm, I am tired of being attacked on things when I'm trying to do the right thing here.
Trustee Domeniac, you there?
I am here.
All right.
Can you hear me? Um, yeah, I, um, I commend my fellow trustees for all the work that they've done on this on both sides of the issue. Um, I simply made a phone call to the executive director of the Lake County Health Department and asked what their stance was on this. Um, and also spoke to my sister who works in this field and tried to get some information from her, but that's not as relevant. The county does not have a position on five G as a potential health impact from EMR from this source. It remains acceptable at the current five G radio frequency per the FDA. So the county itself has not come out on a stance one way or the other. Just basically the stance is, is that the FDA finds it, um, acceptable. Um, and then, you know, I think it was previously commented that, um, we live with, um, radio frequency and electronic, excuse me, I'm sorry, electromagnetic radiation and we've been living that way for a long time and, and, you know, to quote, studies from nineteen ninety just shows that we all have been exposed to this for a long time. So um, it's my understanding that environmental health, um, is not a reason that is allowable for not putting a self, uh, I'm sorry, I got a headache. To not be able to put that, um, that tower. So, uh, I, I have nothing else to say.
Great. Thank you. One more time around. Trustee Pierce?
Wow, I didn't get nothing else.
Um, Trustee Mason, I'll give him a chance.
Um, I'll just say again that the, uh, US Supreme Court will not allow us to use uh, environmental health or the, uh, I, they did, they don't want it. We're locked into it. When they identify an area that they want to sell power, sell tower, we have to go along with it. We, we were told eight years ago, we had to put the big one up on top of the firehouse. It didn't like that either. Like it, it was something we had to do.
Trustee?
Can I, can I just have a question or is it?
You can, but, um, just come up with the microphones if anyone's online that you hear. You can, but just come up with the microphones if anyone's online in here.
Because I'm new to this, because I'm new to this. I was just wondering, when the FCC requests a tower or cellular to go in and if it's very near a place that you may not want it in the village, whether it's for aesthetics, safety, property values, whatever. Is there an allowance to say, okay, it's going to be a quarter mile or it's going to be, can we put it over here three blocks away? Is there any thing that we can state back that can allow for that?
That's what he makes the big one. Um, thank you, sir. Um, the, so we're talking about two separate things. So forty seven USC three thirty two C seven B four is the requirement under the FCC law that says you cannot regulate this based upon radio frequencies. Full stop. There's nothing else about that. Does, are there other zoning controls, even a depth zoning administrator? Um, are there other zoning controls that when these towers come in that get applied? Provided they are not related to this, there are other controls that come in. Notwithstanding, in the small cell ordinance that came out over a couple of years ago, there is a fast track for this because it is an issue of federal preemption. The city, the village board is quite concerned with the health and safety of all of its residents who've been here all day with the police. That safety is a primary concern with people sitting around me here. But there, there is regulations that can go on for zoning for that, unrelated to radio frequency waves. It's just we, the field has been preempted by the FCC on the statute that I previously cited.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for, even though some of the views I don't exactly agree with. But I appreciate all of you and your input and everything you've done. Uh, I would absolutely appreciate if we can do it. A report from Verizon on post installation would be super helpful. I know that was already presented. Uh, if we can do that, even if it's something the village could fund, I would ask for that. I think it would be appropriate for the neighbors that uh live near the tower. At least give us our family and Matt's family definitely some comfort. So thank you for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you. Trustee basic, I don't know.
No, no, everybody said.
Okay.
I I just want to thank Mr. Kramer for coming here tonight. Um, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I know it's Matt.
Holmes.
I want to thank Mr. Holmes for coming today. I have no problems discussing things with you, talking with you calmly anytime. I'm sure the other board members are the same. Um, and but I think discussions have to be in the open in front of the whole board so that everything's transparent. Otherwise, it becomes untransparent and that's, that's not fair to the rest of them. So I really appreciate you coming.
That's why, that's why I made the comment, Robert, to the board, you're kind of, you're kind of black, but what we can't, can't say. Understood.
Thank you. I have nothing further than I'd just like to have Mr. Kind to follow up with what we discussed about the test. Trustee Berman.
Um, I would like to thank each of you for listening tonight to the residents that came here to speak. As you can see, that's really all they wanted. I want to thank Mayor for blowing the seat back to the agenda to allow this open discussion. I I I don't know what else to say at this point. I just yes, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Trustee Deminier.
Um, the only other thing that I would add is that, as I said at the last meeting, um, there's nobody on that board that doesn't support residents and want to do what's best for residents. And to suggest that any of us are not sitting in those chairs for any reason other than doing what we believe is best for the residents is grossly an error. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. Thank you for coming and sticking through this meeting. So I appreciate it. The last item on the agenda, um, which uh is the budget overview, a few things before we get into that. Um, I've been asked four times, who's that guy sitting at the table? So I want to introduce Keith Crowell, who has been here all night. He's uh works with Zeta. Zeta's daughter is having a baby and she has joined us um later. I just, um, I know it's the late hour. I know everybody just kind of got some slides and um the draft budget. Um, the first page of draft budget is kind of a very helpful snapshot. Um, and I would just ask the trustees to, you know, take this stuff digested as we go through the process. We may not hit. Hopefully don't hit all of this tonight, but um, with that being said, I'll turn over to Administrator Kai.
So yeah, first draft, thank you, your honor. Um, tonight was really intended to be just an overview. Um, this budget has probably another six, six weeks to go yet and it'll, it'll change. Um, so please do forward any, you know, take a look at it, forward questions. If you see things that need to get included, I think there's been some things tonight that were talked about that maybe need to get included. Um, so just please, you know, help us. Your, your budget, we prepare your budget. So just keep that in mind. Luckily, we have one of the fastest talking directors online. For tonight's conversation, budget, I've communicated with her that due to the hour, um, some of us are going on thirteen hours straight here. We would, uh, we would all probably like to get this over with as far as tonight goes, but we're going to have other opportunities. We should leave this as a standing item on a future agendas to talk about budget until we get it to where we think it's approvable. So with that, I've asked Zeta to very quickly run through some slides and then please take this. If you have all the slides, take it home, um, and feel free to contact me. Next steps after tonight would be, you know, identify things need to change for draft two. Um, I'd be great to reach out, uh, if you want a meeting with your liaison or me or both, hopefully. Um, so let's, I, I think budget season's really fun. It's just not always fun at ten o'clock. So you know what that, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board, and that's right.
First off, it's the baby board.
Four hours ago, I um met my granddaughter. Exciting night. Can you hear me? Okay, so tonight we're just going to go briefly as, as Jim said, is an executive summary. Um, is an opportunity you should have received. I want to thank Keith so much for stepping for me tonight, stepping in. You should have received this budget book, as the mayor said, um, is a great snapshot. Straight at the beginning to show you where we're projecting we're going to be, which is a good, is good news to the board and to the village. So first slide, the executive summary is a coverage. We're going to go to the second slide, Jim. And to the third slide, which is to provide you an update on the, um, or the board has the packet. I have the slide on one of my monitors, so if it can't go up. If you could follow on the third slide. Um, so I'm giving you a general expense overview by department. This is just to give you a highlight of budget twenty three in comparison to actual and how much and where we are thus far on with budget twenty three. So in budget twenty three, when it comes to revenues, we are at ninety one point four percent, which is above what the target is at the month that this data has been provided. I do want to highlight that at the police, you see police, two million is because the tax levy for the police pension is there. We are trending great with the revenues as you could see, because our target should be for the data that I have here today should be at eighty three percent. So we're above that. At the lower line, you could see the expenses. I always like when I see the percentage below the target when it comes to expenses. Because it means we're spending less. So we're at seventy eight, where typically if you buy where your target ranges, you will be at eighty three percent. I'm going now to slide four, Jim, which gives again the percentage, I'm giving you the percentage, the hundred and four percent of the total budget is property taxes. So I'm on, on slide four, Jim. Um, the property taxes, a hundred and four percent have been collected. If you scroll down and and you look all the way to the bottom, you see that every single category I'm on revenues, twenty three budget revenues here today, page four. Um, if you look at the page, you can see that each, each line item is above the target for revenues. You should be at eighty three percent above and we excelling on that. So um, one of the things I want to bring out is that we do high, we do high in license and permits in a governmental tax. Later on, I'll give you a breakdown so you can see the changes in that. But this is just to give you a snapshot of where we are year to date for budget twenty three. Moving on to the next line, uh, next slide number five, which is what Jim is at, is to give you an idea of the history of the revenues for the general fund. As you look at the top, the property taxes, they slowly trend up. We are non-home rule community, so the max that we could ever levy is either five percent or which is whichever is lower CPI or five percent. So we trend to collect on what we're entitled to for that specific year. We scroll down to the taxes. We do really great. You see the covid in other taxes in twenty twenty one. Um, that's the covid period, but you could see we took a jump start moving up, trending up. And I expect us to probably be above what we anticipate for budget twenty three. And in a governmental, that's a good line for you to take a close look at because the intergovernmental taxes or those taxes we rely upon a lot, which is sales tax, which is income tax. And in the next slide, you see how that's trending. Um, other financing sources, always keep close attention to that line. I'm still on the page before. It's where we typically use and I highlight on my predecessor did the same way presented to you. Anytime we're going to use fund balance or we're transferring from one fund to another. Slide, slide number six, we have fiscal year again, twenty twenty three. Just to show you, these are the major sources of revenue. These are the revenues that keep the operations for the general fund, which is the property taxes important, sales tax, sales tax has done great. If you go back and look at the history, right before twenty into trending into twenty three and I expect a little spike for the ending of this year, but I like to target conservatively. Video gaming, as you can see, is another revenue that has a good history of going in an up slope. So that's, that's a revenue that's trending up. Jumping down to utility tax, utilities tax concerns me a little bit because I see that the telephone tax continues to decrease by a minimum of fifty thousand every year. But it's still at a good spot. Moving on to slide seven, to give you just a slight overview of budget twenty four and with the history of the general fund. Here, Jim asks me to present the budget to you in department category. It shows you the different departments that we currently have in budget twenty twenty three. And you could see how the revenues are broken down across each department. Non-departmental things like property taxes, just things like transfers in and out. Down at the bottom mid-range with the expenses, as you can see, um, it, I give you the departments as well, as well, and the trends on how they're done annually. If you take a good look at the right corner, the bottom of the middle page, where the revenues are, where total revenues are, that's two point two percent increase and the, the expenses at the bottom is two point two. You pretty, we pretty much have a break even budget, which means that revenues almost match exactly expenses, which is great. The next slide, slide number nine. So what I did in this slide, I started to break down and in your packet, you'll see that the general fund is where most of your operation, a lot of activity happens in the general fund. We have a lot of departments. Here, I break down the details. You see administration, the departments that are under administration. And if you flow through the right, you can see the changing, the additions. And it gives you a lot of detailed information. If you want to find out like what a department is costing the village. The next page, page number two, which is part of that budget, I broke it down so you can see it better on the screen. You see finance, you see parks, you see the, the different programs within the parks. So that's another tool for you to use to observe, to see where the changes, what are the trends in those expense and those programs that we have at the village. The next slide, slide number eleven is the third slide to that admin budget by, by department. Here's community development, the new department we have, we have economic development. It's, it is included for budget twenty four and you can see the increase and understand why. Because we didn't, that's for the new position. With police, as you can see, police, the police um, is, is done well this year. Typically, I've seen other communities, high spikes in police. Um, their budget is very well controlled. You know, I always look at that before anything else. It gives me an idea how the budget's going to go. Then we have public works as well. The public works is um is broken down as well by department. The next slide is a, an expense by categories. This is the entire general fund budget. It gives you what personnel costs are across the board for every single department, employee benefit, contracts, et cetera. We all, at the bottom, you could see other financing uses. Well, I just want to make a few comments before we jump into the other funds. In the general fund, the utility tax has been earmarked to transfer to the capital fund. And the capital fund is where you have a lot of debt that's displayed. It's segregated from the other funds so that you can see in that fund that the loans have been taken out to buy or subsidize capital items. So at the end of the fiscal year, what the village has been doing is is transferring that money into the utility tax. The utility tax fund, it goes into the capital to subsidize the debt that's there and any capital pay for any new capital. And the next slide, I'm giving you the history of the major sources of the general one revenue with the trends to the right. As you can see, you could follow the trend on the, on the top. Um, income tax has had a big spike budget. Twenty twenty three, we expected, um, we budgeted nineteen hundred. I do anticipate hitting over that two point three million. So that's, that's a great spike there. Sales tax is trending upward, which is good. I haven't seen anything of concern to that. State use tax as well, video gaming a plus and so forth. So you could see the trends on the right. But I do want to comment on, um, I do want to comment that on, on slide number fourteen is your budget is kind of like, is, is like your cover page. It's that one, Jim. It's, it gives you the budget twenty three, what we budgeted in twenty three. It gives you what we're projecting again in twenty four and it provides you the details, the categories of the revenues and the breakdown also for the expenses again. But I do want to highlight a few things to the board tonight, letting you know, number one, income taxes experiencing definitely upward trend. We have the concern with the utility tax with the telephone. We have to watch that. In the general fund, the revenues um that are from building permits. And in the general fund, what concerns, the concerns for the general fund would be, number one is in the general fund, we have put, we have put into the budget three positions. One is the CSO in the police department. That's also going to be used for inspections. We also have the um, the assistant village administrator. We have the economic, um, economic development coordinator. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because we don't want to make the mistakes that other communities do with using building permits fees to pay fixed costs such as um personnel expenses. So just something to watch out when we're making, where we're putting the budget together for the next phase. Number two, and remember that, you know, we're, we're at a break even point and the the general fund does have a positive, a side positive, and you do have those expenses for the new positions. But you're also relying in this budget for twenty four with building permits. If I were to pull out the building permits, you will be at a deficit. So just wanted to highlight those things. I think it's really important. It's important that the market is showing that companies are laying off people in the private sector. So when that happens, it affects income tax and it affects people shopping at our stores for sales tax. Um, that's for that. And just to let you know that I did project for um twenty four very conservatively. So we can move on to the water sewer. The water sewer, it really much, as you know, it is an enterprise fund. It means that the revenues has to subsidize the expensive expenses. It's supposed to be self-sufficient and not rely on anything other than fees to maintain operation here and but in um, number sixteen, we have budget twenty-three to actual. Again, I'm presenting to you, um, where are we as of the beginning of March in um, the percentage versus actual and budget? And the water sewer fund is slightly low where it should be at eighty-three percent. But that's because the water billing has not been posted to the ledger, which is coming up. So just wanted to show you that portion of the water sewer. The bottom is, is less. That's good. Um, we're not spending as much as we budgeted. That's good. It goes to the surplus for next year. So those trends are good. I did want to point out, I missed telling the board that um, the IMRF, the village went on a program to um, pay liability on the IMRF. And the IMRF decreased over fifty percent, which had a great effect and an impact on the budget because it doesn't, it subsidized any increases we had in personnel expense. So that's a good thing to report. On the next slide, number seventeen, Jim, is the water sewer, just to give you again another history on the water sewer revenues across the board like I did in the general fund. Next slide for twenty-four, budget twenty-four for the water sewer, I'm on slide nineteen. Is a history, I gave you the same comparison I gave you in the general fund, which is um, the revenues with a history, the projected versus um, the budget twenty-three, and I did the same thing with the expenses. The expenses here in the general fund are slightly higher than the revenues of concern that we're getting close to the point that um, the general fund will start just breaking even. In this fund, we have other financing sources. If you take a look at the middle of the line to the right, there's a number for three hundred and fifty thousand. That is for a capital item. It has to sit here because it is for the water sewer fund. So it is, it says other finding, financing sources. And that's because we intend to use water sewer balance, fund balance monies, not revenues, operating revenues. So I wanted to highlight that, that that will be coming out of fund balance and not operating revenues. The next slide just gives you a quick snapshot on um, the cha, the trends from year to year on actual and budget. Slide number twenty-one. Here is a snapshot again of the budget comparison for budget twenty-three, what we budgeted and where we going for twenty-four, a snapshot all by itself. So um, for a better look on how we doing. Ch, slide number twenty-two, the business districts and the TIF. So I put these slides together because Jim and I are in the process of repairing the capital plan and he'll discuss that at the end of my slides. But I just wanted to bring up a couple of things about the TIF district. I haven't done anything with them other than what is mandatory. So the boil and TIF, as you could see, the property taxes are slightly increasing. They just bring an average of a hundred thousand a year and all I put in is the six hundred dollar fee that sometimes comes up from, from uh, uh, things that we need to pay for counting, um, the audit at the end of the year. The second TIF district, as you can see, the property taxes are two million. And the only thing that sits here is the debt, the debt that we have applied to the TIF. At this time, these are the only expenses I have right there for um, for twenty-four. But when Jim and I meet, that will change to subsidize the capital plan that he has. Those are the TIF districts. Here, the next slide is the business districts. And here I just want to highlight, this is very important with the, the business district. Things have changed for the business district because we issued the bond twenty-two with the intent to use these funds to pay the bond for those capitals that apply into the business district. We got the property taxes on the east business district, all the way to your right, that the amount that we collect is one point two million. I'm almost using all of it for that TIF district to pay part of the bond. If you move down to the central business district, the property taxes are nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. Again, I'm using more than half of that to pay debt. So just, I just wanted to point that out, that that, that district is, is bringing in a surplus of just four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. On the top is just thirteen. I think it's something that I need to highlight and fill you in. On the next slide, Jim, we're almost at the end and I need water. Um, uh, the funds, that, uh, these funds here, not that they're not important, they're important, but they're the least we use to operate. So depot parking, I could talk to the appropriate staff to discuss the slight deficit on there. Not a big deal. Um, we don't have too much activity. Motor fuel is straightforward. Motor fuel is um, you know, road and bridge and items that are there from last year. And those will be modified when Jim and I talk about capital. The park infrastructure just exists, is um, it's been sitting there and the debt service is just the in and out. Um, funds that come in from the business district to pay the debt service for bond twenty-two. Um, and the last slide is pretty much the same slide you have on your cover page. I think this is a great budget when we sat with, with Jim and um, we just went through the budget without making any cuts yet, just some cuts were made, just corrections and cut. But this is where we are right now before we're given direction to go back and make any modifications. So that's all I have for you regarding the budget. And um, any questions, please feel free to call me or meet with me anytime. Um, your budget book is slightly different than last year because we do have a new software, budget software. It allows for more detail, so I try to do my best to give you all the detail you may need. And Jim takes it from here, Cap.
Thank you and congratulations.
Uh, thank you.
Great job, Zeta. I'm moving through that quickly. I think that was much. Um, there's a lot there, right? It's, it's a lot. So take some time with it and um, very typical budget process for us. Um, we'll, we'll continue to refine this budget and get things where we need to be as far as capital goes. We knocked out some projects last year, police parking lot. Um, needs property purchases. We progressed in other projects, but I've worked out basically what I call a planning sheet of projects. I've updated costs. Keep in mind, some of these are estimated costs that are not designed yet. I don't know if public works is going to be twelve million dollars. I suspect it will be higher. I don't know if the village hall project will be three million dollars. I suspect it will be higher. But what I need to do is put a number on the page and look at revenue sources available to me and try to slice and dice it. That's kind of what I call it, where I match up revenue sources, what it can be used for. A lot of those revenue sources are restricted. Um, so I can only use uh, business district in the business district. I can't, you know, but for that district, you know, we, we can't take money from that and even improve Centennial Park. So you got to keep in mind that some of these monies are not interchangeable. Arpa money, Arpa money is, you know, going to be used on the property across the street here on that project. Uh, it qualifies because it's a stormwater project. Uh, it can't be used for others. It can be used for water, stormwater. I believe it can be used for high-speed internet. Um, and then some COVID-related expenses, but it's restricted to those things. So um, I've worked out a scenario here. It is likely to change as we gain knowledge and information about projects as they progressive designs. And then we'll adjust from there. It's very similar to last year's worksheet, but different. Um, our philosophy has changed. We're going to use grant money first. Bond money because that is time for a second and we're going to keep cash, spend that last on projects. So that's what I'm trying to do, accomplish with this. Um, this is taking into account any new projects or properties that you may be entertaining. Um, but I, I will say, my general feeling on this is we're going to struggle. Um, if the projects go up in cost for inflationary purposes or just the way the design needs to be, um, we are going to struggle to, to fund all of the projects a, as you see on this page. And you can see a list below of projects that are, we're going to have to look at additional revenue sources as best we can. Um, so with that, of course, any questions, comments, whatever, feel free to contact me to.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I know this will be a, mine, we do now and.
We're going to keep it on the agenda.
Sorry, yeah. This in the park, pretty much just this here.
But I'm feeling pretty good about it in general. I hope it should be freaking out right now.
Um, all right. Any other business? Any executive session? All right, so motion adjourned. Motion trustee Peterson, second, who there, um, all in favor?
Hi.
Be opposed? All right, meeting adjourned. Ten twenty-two.